Did you give me the?
I support.
The agenda?
I did. Oh, maybe I did. Oh, you put it down.
It was so funny when I saw her as in, you're gone.
You may not be up to 70 in here.
Okay. We are going to call to order the regular city council meeting of June 26th, 2023. Madam clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. As we said, I've never felt so safe as tonight. So, thank you all for being here. Thank you all for the police and things. So, first, we are going to have the swearing in of the new Rochester Police Chief, George Rohib. And I have the honor of swearing him in, so we're going to have George come up and our Police Chief, and we will do that. So, you say your name, and then I will give this. So, I, George.
I, George Rohib.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully perform duties of Chief of Police and in and for the City of Rochester, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability?
I do.
Congratulations, new Chief of Police. Chief, would you like to say a few words to your...
Introduce the family?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Bixson and Council, for allowing me to be part of the Rochester family. I'm looking forward to it. Today was my first day. The Chief here, he worked me over. We had a lot of fun. We drove through the community, and I'm going to love it here. And I just want to say to the men and women that I will be the leader of back there in that back row. I'll never forget where I came from. If you talk to people that work with me, you'll know what kind of person I am. I'll give you everything that I have, and I will be there for you. I don't care what problem you have, I will be there. I will listen, I will support you, and my goal is to give you all the proper equipment and training so you can go home safe at night and serve the community to the best of your ability. For the Rochester residents, this is going to be fun for me. My goal is to meet as many peoples as I can, one-on-one. I'd like to hear what you have to say. I'd like to make the changes if I can, implement certain programs, but we're going to have a lot of fun. And who else I got to thank? Chief Shettenhelm. I got to tell you, the Chief, he's been helping me out for the last couple of months. He's been an absolute gentleman. He's elected to stay on for a few weeks to help me transition. There's not many people that would do that, but it just goes to show you what his character is, as a leader and as a man. Again, I will say, he left his legacy here. It's an unbelievable legacy. I got some huge shoes to fill. But Chief, the only thing I could say is, you'll always be part of the Rochester family here at the Police Department in the city, and no matter what, anything that you ever need, you and your wife do not hesitate to call, I will be there for you. And I really do appreciate everything you've done for me. And to my family and friends, my former coworkers here, I can't believe how many showed up here. You're still not getting free parking.
Nobody does.
I can't say enough for my children to be here today. You know, this is my last, this is my last lap in law enforcement, and as I get older, I get more emotional, but I saved the best for last. We made a lot of sacrifices together throughout all these years. Everything that I missed, I'm sorry, but I did it for you. And my wife, she's my rock. She pushed me. She's always there for me. She's always in my corner, and I love her to death. She's the most beautiful woman I've ever met, and I love you. And for all my coworkers and friends here, I love all of you guys, and we're going to have fun. We're just going to have some fun here. And can you guys stand up? My family, my immediate family, my sister is here, my brother-in-law, my bro, where's my brother, Dan? Just, that's my immediate family. And I'm looking forward to working. Lieutenant Harper is second-in-command here. I'm looking forward to working with Keith and the rest of the command staff here. We're going to learn from each other. I bring a lot of knowledge, and I, my goal is to give you everything that I have, and I will. And with that, I don't think you want me to talk anymore because you've got to get this meeting done. But I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know how important it is to have great leadership here, and I am so confident that I'm going to be that leader, and I will follow in this gentleman's footsteps. I assure you that. So, thank you for everything, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for those kind words. I certainly appreciate it. I mean, we went through an exhaustive selection process to reach this end, and we've, I think, picked someone who certainly will respect the traditions and the things that we've accomplished to get this far, with a key eye certainly improving and getting only better from here on out. So, I'm confident that Chief Rohib is a person who can do that, and I certainly look forward to watching that happen. So, I appreciate that very much. This is our certificate here of appointment, so it becomes more and more official in each of these things that we've passed by. So, I will hand you that.
Thank you.
And obviously, a police officer is not a police officer without a badge. And so, it's my pleasure to invite his wife, Angelina, to come up and to pin the badge on her husband. A little bit?
Don't stand.
Don't stand.
No pressure.
I don't want pressure. And one other person I wanted to thank is Mr. Banda. The moment I met this man, I knew we connected. Now, I know why everyone loves to work for him, and he's been nothing but a gentleman and a supporter, and it's going to be a pleasure working for you, sir.
Thank you.
So, those that are with George, friends, family, and officers, who will be having a brief reception downstairs in the Police Department, that you're all welcome to attend, right after we honor Sergeant Mancini, and then we'll get started downstairs.
All right, so Sergeant Mancini, why don't you come on up?
There he is.
I was just going to say, I don't see him here. So, we have a city, a resolution from the City Council. I'll read it briefly. To congratulate Michael Mancini on his retirement from the Rochester Police Department, whereas Michael retired from the City of Rochester Police on June 30th, 2023, after 26 years of service. Whereas he served as seasonal bike officer, ordinance officer, patrol officer, and sergeant. Whereas during years of service, Michael Mancini was committed to keeping the City of Rochester safe for its residents, business owners, and visitors. And whereas the City Council is appreciative of Mike's diligence and hard work during his employment, and now therefore be it resolved that the Rochester City Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude for his years of service to the City of Rochester. So, thank you for your years of service.
Mike, can I say a few words?
Say a couple of words. Get a chance. I promise to be more brief. You know, the Chiefs like to talk. I want to thank City Council, fellow coworkers, the Chief, and my family. Without them, I wouldn't be able to do this. It was a tough decision, but it's time, and just thank you to everybody. Thank you. It's been a fun ride.
I think Mr. Cars was the shortest one we've ever had. So, Chief, are you guys going to go to another room, or are you going to stay here for...
We're going to go downstairs, yes. We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Chief.
Are you doing court?
Chief, Chief, she's sleeping. We don't get to go. We're not invited.
Oh, she's there.
But we did get invited at 5:00. They were.
Is that going to be as fun as what's happening?
Probably not. Oh, look at the dogs.
They're officers, too.
I didn't see them back there.
Hi.
Did you see the three?
Come on, guys. Awesome.
Only my grandkids think this is your life.
I know. Now, you can finally say hi.
She's got to make her rounds. Honestly, it's just easier to walk behind her.
Yeah, a long time, right?
She's the drug dog.
It's legal, though. I always knew that. I could just tell.
Well, see, I told you they weren't here for us.
And I thought they were. I'm glad you told me.
Yeah, Ann knew. She's the wily veteran. She knew it wasn't they were here for us.
No, they were all happy.
Is that a prediction? It was good to see them. As brief as it was, it was good to see them.
That was, that was great.
So, who's giving an update on CORE?
Yeah, you guys remember, we're live, so watch what you say.
I know.
Don't forget.
Sometimes you do, but we're behaving ourselves.
I will say to the Council, just another party we're not invited to, right? Sorry.
It's, we're just having to do our job.
Okay. We will now continue on with the meeting. Have a seat, everybody, if you would like one. We are going to now have an update on CORE, the Mental Health Co-Responder Program and Crisis Intervention Training. Is that you, Chief?
Yes.
All right.
So, thank you very much. I think it's just, I wanted to take an opportunity, now that our second co-responder has joined us, to kind of update you on where the program stands, and just a brief reminder of the co-response program. So, back in the fall, we joined the Departments of Auburn Hills, Birmingham, and Bloomfield Township as the fourth department that is using this co-responder model. And so, in partnership with Oakland Community Health Network, we have the services of two trained social workers, co-responders, that work with us in a variety of ways. So, some of that is in actual response out on the road to calls that occur while they're working. And then also, I think what was always missing in the past is, we did a good job of handling calls at the scene. Our officers are very patient, they're knowledgeable on what to do, but that's kind of where that service ended, and we're on to the next call or the next day. Whereas now, what our officers can do is turn in a referral form, and it lists some information about the call. We send them a copy of the police report, and then allows our co-responders to follow up afterwards and provide aftercare, checking to make sure that things are stable in the household, make sure that they need resources, they have experience and the knowledge to point them in the right, in the right area, to get the help that they need, and to really kind of carry that response back beyond the initial response to something that's meaningful and important for the family. And also, it's not necessarily just the person that may be having a crisis or an issue, but it's the family that's behind them, and so we can make those kind of contacts. So, it's really a holistic approach to looking at a mental health or other family problem that our co-responders can help us with, and really provide a better level of service than we did in the past. One of the other things is, they're also able to help our officers as well, and so they've been a resource when we've had critical instances, where they can kind of follow up with the officers, kind of perform that check-in, and to see that they're okay. You know, we've had situations where we've handled death investigations, we had a situation where we had officers respond to a critical infant, where CPR was given en route to the hospital and things of that nature, and it's important that we follow up and check in on those, on those officers, and make sure that if they needed assistance or follow-up care, that we do that as well. So, it's just been a great resource to have. The four departments couldn't be happier with the service that we have been provided, and we're just pleased that we're able to join this partnership to work together in this manner. The other thing is, you hear a lot about crisis intervention. You know, a lot of departments have teams, or they have special officers. Our goal is to have each and every one of our officers and have received the 40-hour block of crisis intervention training, so that they, everyone is a crisis intervention officer. Everybody's part of the team. Everybody is, is working with that kind of mindset in mind when they respond to calls, and we're over halfway there to having that, that accomplished. And so, that also makes this working relationship between the co-responders and our officers work even that much better, because we're kind of all talking the same language, and we're on the same page. We have the, the knowledge of the same type of resources, and so I think it certainly helps our, our response as well. So, I just want an opportunity to, to thank and to introduce Hillary Nosbaum. Hillary used to be, anybody that's in the school, she's familiar as someone who worked as a social worker in Rochester Community Schools, and so she knows the area and knows our, our officers as well. And then our newest co-responder is Courtney Thomason, and we're certainly pleased to have them as part of our team, and so I appreciate that very much. Do you have a brief word?
Yeah.
You need to, you need to come up. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Hillary Nosbaum, and I started in this program about two years ago in August. And yeah, it's really quite a privilege and an honor to be back in Rochester in this, in this realm, so I'm really excited about that. And we, we work really hard to make sure we can get out and, you know, respond with officers on scene, and the, the great thing is, now that Courtney and I are both responding, our hours have expanded, which is great. So, we, we run together, at least from 7:30 in the morning until 10:00 PM at night, Monday through Thursday. So, that's, that's great. So, we have a little bit more, more time on the road. Based on research, that's kind of when the most calls come in. So, we've been able to, we're getting started. We're, Courtney's finishing her onboarding, and then she'll be out on the road, too. So, we're really excited to do this, and it's been great, like, meeting the officers and going riding with them. For us, relationship is really important as well, so one of the, the major things we do is really work on the relationships we have with the officers in each of our departments. So, not only is it responding to scenes with them, it's taking time to go, you know, in, in their cars with them and just ride with them for several hours, and just spending time and, and being out there with them. So, we really, really pride ourselves on making sure we're doing that, too. So, again, thank you for having us and being a part of this department. We're, we're so happy to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, any questions that we can answer for you?
Councilmember Chen.
Yes, so this program, so you identify somebody after you've intervened, and they, you help them get resources then, or follow-up services to help them get the care that they need, if that's needed?
Yes, that's, the goal is, is to provide that kind of aftercare after the fact. These are not, you know, long-term therapy-type relationships, but it's to check in and make sure that we can point people in the right direction and, and find the needs that they have and, and get that to them. So, it's to make those connections that maybe were not made before, where an officer would control a situation at the moment, but we really didn't have a way, two, three days later to see, well, what was the aftereffect of that situation, and then what, what's been done to make it a better situation. So, sometimes, that's, you know, that's the benefit here, is we're able to check in after, have someone who's, you know, not a, not a police officer, but certainly has, is related with us, and many times on those after-visits, a police officer will go with them, but it's, it's really the benefit of having a social worker there that can try, try to look at things in a little different method and manner and come up with a better solution for the family.
Well, I'm glad it's working so well. I was excited when they presented it in the fall. So, yeah, it's a wonderful program. Thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Loved the sounds of this program when it, when it first came. I'm glad it's so successful. I was wondering, is there any possibility of scaling it up and including more departments, or do they already have things like this going on, or how that look?
There are a number of departments throughout Oakland County that are looking at it. I mean, we've been reached out to a number of places that are trying. Troy already has it in place. The Sheriff's Office has it in place in Pontiac, and so it's, it's growing and growing, and certainly the concept, based on the work that was done initially by Auburn Hills, Birmingham, and Little Township, has, has been watched as a model and is going forward.
Great. Thank you. Great program. Thank you.
Very awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, is, is this your last meeting?
No.
No?
No.
No?
It might, I don't know. We'll see.
No.
You'll be back, right? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? Is Brian out there?
There is no one online. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next, approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of June 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda, consideration of a special event application from the Roman James Foundation to hold the Shine Bright Fun Run on Friday, August 25th, in the municipal park, and a review of the current special events calendar.
Motion to approve as presented.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no old business or tabled items. Onto public hearing. We have a public hearing, the adoption of a proposed brownfield plan for the Riverfront Place redevelopment project located at 211 First Street. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, way back machine a bit, a few years ago, Mr. Randazzo, who introduced himself and his team in a bit, came before the planning commission, and then ultimately City Council, for a development at the corner of Walnut, or the T, at Walnut and First Street for, I think, 134-unit multi-story apartment building, and then 17 condos along the river. That process went through. It was a very complicated and heavy environmental evaluation on that site from Eagle, from both engineering reasons for, it's within a 500-year flood plain. There's a lot of engineering that they had to jump hoops through that would take, we knew, well, up to 18 months, just to get through that with our engineers and Eagle to prepare themselves to be able to get to the point where they would build a project. Full disclosure, at the initial meetings, Mr. Randazzo indicated that even though they knew the site was dirty, it was a contaminated site, it was Eagle, it was eligible for brownfield authority at that time, in those days before COVID, Mr. Randazzo said, at this time, I'm not looking for, looking to ask for a brownfield ask of the city. So, we went through that process. A few months ago, Mr. Randazzo reached out to me. Once they got through engineering, they got through finding out what's going on in that earth, which they'll go over, and circumstances have changed. That led for Mr. Randazzo and his team, and appreciate their environmental folks, and working with our environmental folks, AKT, on our side, and Sam and Jen are out there. Wave, yep, they're with here. Jeff Franklin, I think Jeff's on our back, he's our attorney, that works on reimbursement agreement, et cetera. Jeff Haines, sorry. We, so we started working through that process, knowing that we had to get all that information in front of the brownfield authority. So, Christian Hauser is our chairman of our brownfield authority, Jeff Franklin is sitting to his left, Julie's back there, Julie DeFrain, and Scott Rowan is here. One of our folks is in Colorado, Michael Pleish, is not here. So, we met with that board, they're, the team from Randazzo came in, gave a detailed explanation of what they're asking for, what the work plan looks like, how they would have been working with Eagle to get to that point. We had a meeting on, I think, May 9th, if I remember right, Marcy, that we, we all met together and went through that plan, and because of such a thorough investigation that they had done with our team, we were able to get all the quirks worked out prior to that meeting. So, in one meeting, we were able to disseminate the information, everybody had got it a couple weeks earlier, go over that. The brownfield authority was, sorry, Christian, for stealing your, your thunder here a little bit, the brownfield authority was able to make a decision that night. That was to bring forward to this City Council a request for a brownfield redevelopment ask. So, we're going to, Christian's going to come up and talk a little bit about what they thought about in that process, and then Mr. Randazzo's team will explain why they're asking for, what they're asking for, and then we have our team here available to answer any questions Council might have. What we're looking for is approval tonight of the brownfield plan, based on our recommendation from our brownfield authority and staff's setup. It's a seven-year plan. The time we did this with Rewald, I'm going to go back just a little teeny bit, we had one brownfield plan so far. We have our own authority, we do not go through the county. We were very thankful that on the Rewald plan, we got a million-dollar grant and a million-dollar loan. And because of the work that was done with the Rewalds, they used most of the grant and not a lot of the loan. It was a seven-year payback, which means after seven years, the city and the county and the state and the schools would get full reimbursement. That's, that was our limits as a council. We decided back four years ago that that's about as far as we want to go. You can literally do a 30-year payback by law on a brownfield. 15 years used to be standard, that's a long time for the community to wait to get their tax dollars, right? So, we agreed, and now it's pretty much, Julie does this for Troy, pretty much a lot of the cities now are shooting for that sweet spot of seven years. We can reinvest in each other to bring in what Christian's going to talk about, the reasons that we wanted to do this. So, we are unbelievably grateful and thankful that the Rewald plan will be at your next meeting for abolishment, which means we completed all of the work, all the monies have been received, and we are be able to close that at three and a half years instead of seven. So, now the DDA, for instance, they were the taxing jurisdiction from the city's taxes that got reimbursed, they got $122,600 four and a half years early, and you compound that over the next three and a half years. Huge win for the cities. We're thankful for that. I think that's why the DEQ, or Eagle, was very open to another million-dollar grant on the, on the elevator site, because we performed very well, and we, with the help of Jen and Sam, we get all the stuff in on time, and we have no problems with them. So, that's, that's good for our reputation as a community. So, with that, Christian, if you'd like to come up, Mr. Mayor?
So, we're going to have Christian Hauser, the chairman of our brownfield, then we're going to have the applicant.
Correct.
Then we'll open a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
For, and then if the Council has questions for the prosecutors, we'll ask them, and then we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then Council will decide. So, Christian, come on up. Christian, you look very formal tonight.
I do like to be here this evening. I just have a quick question. If I need to move a slide, is there a button that I press on? I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, Christian Hauser on behalf of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. As Mr. Banda said, my other colleagues are here, Scott, Julie and Jeff. And we've all worked very hard on this. And I'm here today to tell you a little bit how we reached our decision, because I think it's important that the council understands, but more importantly, anyone listening. Because this is gonna be something that the council, planning brownfield, is going to see in the future with some other developments in the city. And it can be a little bit complicated, but I'm hoping that I can explain it in a way that is plain English and removes some of the technical components of this. So the brownfield commission is statutory. And what we do is we look at parcels of property in the city for redevelopment. And typically, these parcels of property are underused. They're either abandoned, they're isolated. And in most circumstances, there's some type of perceived contamination. It may be actual, but it may be perceived. And until you do the testing, no one really knows for certain. So the parcel that we're talking about this evening is the area at First and Diversion, which is dead ends at Walnut there and used to be a myriad of prior uses. And they're articulated in the, in the program here. And what we've got is an environmental history as to what this site was. And what we have done is looked at the existing site in comparison to what the proposed use is going to be. And the balance test that we have is, does this qualify in very plain terms of the city spending its money to redevelop a parcel of property that sits contaminated and unused and generating very little, if any, revenue for the city? And I don't want to steal the show here, but we came back with the answer, yes. We do believe that this parcel of property qualifies for the brownfield benefit, and I will give you the reasons why. So when we look at this, we see the financials components, okay? And I'm gonna talk numbers here and hopefully not put anyone to sleep. Currently, there is a taxable value, I'm sorry, the generating tax of this property is about $15,200, okay? Now, as far as I understand, the city doesn't get $15,200 for that per year. We get a percentage, which I believe is 25.88%, and I think if my math is correct, it's about $3,900. So as we sit here today, the city gets $3,900 for, in tax revenue on that parcel. The rest of it goes to the county, goes to the state. The developer has brought into a plan that would clean up the contaminated areas consistent with Eagle's obligations and requirements. And the survey that they would do, the survey that was prepared for the environmental cleanup is between the developer and Eagle and all best practices, AKT, perilous. All those individuals would prepare a survey, and I believe that survey is done and it is available for the general public. I am not qualified at all to talk about what specific contaminations or what work remediation is gonna be done. I will defer that to the developer and the engineers. But I can tell you that all the work would be done consistent with all the applicable environmental regulations. And the cost to do all that work is estimated to be $1,957,268. And in the request there, it breaks down how that number is tallied. And again, I'll leave that for the engineers. I'll leave that for the developer. But those are the numbers. And how this would work is the developer spends this money to clean up the property. The developer spends the money to go vertical, build and develop the site. And then what would happen is the tax assessor would come through and reassess the value of that property. And based on what we believe, or what has been referenced to us, the tax value would obviously go much, much higher. And they would pay their taxes to the city. And the city would then reimburse the developer the amount above what they're paying now, the $15,200 versus what the actual assessment is, okay? And that would go for seven years. That's that seven-year number that they talk about. So for seven years, they're gonna pay their taxes and the city is going to give that money back less the $15,200 that they're already receiving. Now, a couple of things. That 15, I'm sorry, that assessment is a number that they estimate to be obviously much higher. The developer, if I understand this, does take a little bit of risk. Because if that number comes in below what they think it's gonna be, they might not get all their 1.9 million back in that seven years. That's on that, the city is not gonna be in a position where if that year seven comes and they've only been paid $1.5 billion, for instance, the city's not gonna extend it additional years. The city's not gonna obviously reach into its pocket and cover the delta. That's the risk that the developer takes. Similarly, if the assessment comes in higher than they think it would, similar to what happened on the rewald property, that seven years might be compressed into five or five and a half or whatever number, meaning that they get their money back more quickly and the city benefits because now it's starting to capture those tax dollars that prior to were going to the developer. So that's the basic mechanics of that process, okay? There is reasons why the authority decided that this was a property that qualified for the brownfield redevelopment money. And it's essentially, this property, logistically where it's situated, presents itself well to do exactly what we want to do as a city and as a board. And that's to redevelop an area of the city that's underused that we believe would support directly the businesses right in town. So you've got your downtown strip, you've got the shops, the restaurants. The traffic studies have come back favorable, and we can debate those all we want. But nevertheless, it was approved. And we believe that that fit a particular purpose and a need. And based on all of the information that we had to date, we recommended unanimously that this brownfield be applied to this particular development. I will leave the specifics of the presentation of the development to the developer. If there's questions about abatement or remediation, I will defer that to the engineers. But if there are any questions concerning the consensus among the brownfield authority or how we reached our decision, I am happy to answer those if not done. But I see a question.
Councilmember Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Christian. So just to educate me and everybody else listening, so we had the rewald headquarters is the one brownfield.
That's correct.
The second brownfield is what's going on at the elevator. Is that a brownfield or not?
So if I, I'll try if I say something incorrectly. They have, there is a million-dollar grant that was given by Eagle that has nothing to do with the city of Rochester. That was Eagle gave the developer a million dollars to start abating that property.
Okay, Christian, why don't you stop me for a minute? So kind of the opposite, the Eagle gave the city the million dollars on behalf of the developer.
So, so would they, is there a potential, Nick, that they would come to the, before the brownfield? Because the million-dollar grant is not covering what they need to do?
Right. So that would be potential, but all to date, and I know somebody's gonna say, I can hear it in the back of my head, that they are not asking for a brownfield. It wasn't their consideration. They felt the million dollars with Mosherian rewald, that would cover what they needed to do it. So they have never even talked about it and identified it as a site. So technically, it's not a brownfield site for a TIF reimbursement. We get full taxes day one, once that is properly assessed.
Okay, so we, the first, so this is only the second brownfield. And this, so the first brownfield was a million dollars, which has been paid back three and a half years early. This one's gonna be 1.957 million, which is also gonna be subject to the same seven million, or seven-year payback.
That's correct. And in the numbers there, and I'm sorry, not in my reading glasses. I think that's the slide. If you look there, Mr. Albert, you'll see there's the bullet point at the bottom says, annual increase in capturable taxes upon completion of plan, $484,000. That's the money that would be paid instead of the $15,200. So you can see the demonstrative scope size of that coming into, into the city. And another thing that I also wanted to mention is you hear this 1.9 million dollars. The city's paying a developer 1.9 million dollars to develop this and clean this up. That's not actually correct. And what I would like to do is if you look at that number there up at top, it says a total requested reimbursement is 1.9 million. Almost half of that goes to the state. 24% goes to the county and 25.88 goes to the city. So in reality, the city is paying or giving up $506,000 of that 1.9 to have this redevelopment done. So I want to clarify that because this is not the city reaching into its pocket and paying 1.9 million dollars for a redevelopment of a contaminated site. What this is, is the city is forbearing in giving up $506,000 in taxes that it would receive if this project goes forward or doesn't go forward. So I wanted to make that clarification as well.
Okay, then my next question will probably be for the developer, because they were here a few years ago and we approved this. Again, I'll want to hear why this didn't come up two years ago when we approved it. It seems like, you know, now the numbers have changed, so now we're coming back and looking for this 1.9 million. Is that probably not you, Christian? I just, I just wanted to tee that up for when they make their presentation.
We, we did discuss it briefly, but again, I'll defer to the owner on that. They're much more equipped to handle that question.
Councilmember Gould?
Oh, that, thank you. Councilmember Albrecht asked my question, I guess it'd be more appropriate for the developer.
Okay. Are there questions for Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So question, brownfield, the authority, when you reviewed this, did you keep with the seven years due to that's what we've always done?
Well, yes. And so again, as Mr. Banda said, the statute allows, I believe, for up to 30 years.
Right, right.
There was no appetite for that. 15, again, was far too long. And the seven worked very well the last time. So our position was, it worked once, let's continue to do that again. Because if it's not broke, don't fix it. So that's how we came up for that, somewhat arbitrary, but also somewhat following the pattern and practice of the other joint.
Okay, and I, and it might be, my next question might be for the developer. But I do know that the state of Michigan just added another 50 million to the brownfield grants. Is there any possibility of the developer being able to ask for the grant? Because they just put that extra money in there because they understand how important it is for all these municipalities to clean up the land so they can build housing, which he would meet those, that criteria because it is housing.
I would have to defer that to, I don't know if, timing-wise, temporarily, if that would be enough. Because I understand they've already, they want to get this thing going. But again, I, I don't want to speak out of school.
Are there questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
So the, the site plan that was approved, there's no change at all?
Zero changes.
Right. So because they've been working on it?
Even with the engineering, zero changes to what the planning commission would need to rece if they were changing anything.
Right. So it, so it doesn't have to go through planning commission? So everything's set from what, what it was?
Correct. Thank you.
So, Mr. Randazzo, your team, do you want to come up now and just introduce yourself for the audience? Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Andy Millia, Franklin Property. I'm a development consultant for Trailbridge Companies, Mr. Randazzo's company. I have to admit, it's a little intimidating to walk into a public hearing and seeing 100 people here.
You're safe. You're safe.
Four, four different police forces and two bomb dogs. But it's also more rewarding when they all leave before the public hearing starts. So we look forward to the opportunity to present tonight and to answer any questions. I think Mr. Banda did a nice job at explaining a part of the rationale on, on why we're back and seeking this. This project started over four or five years ago, prior to COVID, prior to the pandemic. We worked through the pandemic. We worked through COVID together. I think we had a number of Zoom meetings. And we were ultimately approved over two years ago on this, still during the pandemic time. And during that time period, the world was changing. Inflation had started, costs were increasing, but nothing like we have seen over the last couple of years and nothing like we had ever anticipated. Everybody knows from going to the grocery store that you're paying 10 to 20% more than you did a couple of years ago. Well, in the construction industry, we're currently paying 40% more for goods and services to build the building that was a million dollars a couple of years ago, is a million four today. And invite, and multiply that out. Construction has gone up 40% between labor, supply chain issues, cost of materials. We're competing with concrete for the 275 project, so it just, it just never stops. So the comment was made, the question was asked over two years ago, would you be seeking a brownfield? And the answer was no, because that was, was never the intent. However, it was never in anybody's wildest dream, even with COVID starting, that we would have runaway inflation, runaway construction inflation. So that's why we're here before you. I think Mr. Hauser made a good point as well that the brownfield development and brownfield requests are more and more common in every community today. Five years ago, maybe one out of 10 projects that we did was a brownfield request. Today, in just about every community, seven, eight out of 10 are brownfield requests. I'm gonna introduce Jessica DeBonne in a minute, who's our environmental and brownfield expert. I didn't know her a couple of years ago, and now she's on speed dial because everything we're doing is brownfield. To make any project, any project fairly viable in a community such as this, brownfield is required. So we're here to answer any questions you have. Mr. Randazzo's here as well to answer. I'm gonna let Jessica and her colleague go through some of the technical aspects of it. She truly is an expert, so ask her any of the detailed questions and we're here to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just before you talk, this was important to us. When they initially came in, they brought in their plan and it was over 1.97 million. And the brownfield authority, we sat down in our initial meeting and said, listen. And it actually happened in staff meeting. We said, if you were gonna build with no brownfield, I'm gonna use numbers, a yard of dirt to get off the site was $30. You're gonna have to do that no matter what. Now it's $54 a yard to take it to a class three landfill. We, the city, does not have any interest in paying for, even though the whole $54 is eligible because it's dirty dirt. We said, we don't see it that way. We see the increment of a greenfield development with no contamination in a brownfield. What is that delta? That's what we would support. And that was a, that's a big pushback on our side. We did that, sat down with Mr. Randazzo initially and said, that's how we're gonna present it to our brownfield board. We don't want to pay for everything that's eligible. We want just the delta. Without flinching, he thought that was fair and that's how we came to these numbers. So I, I think it's important that we let you know, the ask was much bigger, it's much dirtier. But we wanted to go that delta between greenfield and brownfield. Thank you.
One other point I'd like to clarify, as Mr. Banda had said, the plan before you does not change. The, the site plan, the elevation, the architecture is the exact same that was approved. Normally what happens, whether it's a real estate development, a engineering project, an automotive, any kind of manufacturing project, when something comes in budget, comes in over budget, the first thing people do is, how do I make this cheaper? How do I, how do I strip it down? How do we do that? We're not, we're not doing that. What we're, is being proposed is the exact same plan. And to talk about a little bit more, when you, when you talk about, well, didn't rents go up a little bit? Rents did go up a little bit, but they didn't go up 40%. They might've gone up 10%. And operating expenses have gone up even more than the rental has gone up. So the problem is, is our construction costs have gone up more than the rents have gone up and have gone up more than the, and the expenses are up as well. But I'll let Ms. DeBonne go through all the, the technical aspects of it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So my name is Jessica DeBonne. I'm a manager of brownfield economic incentives with PM Environmental. Here's the parcel, here are the parcels we're talking about. There's three parcels in the north and then there's one parcel to the south that is not outlined in red. That is part of the project, but not included in the brownfield plan. So I'd just like to make a note of that because once though that southern parcel is built, all of the new taxes on that parcel will be immediately generated and realized by the city and other taxing jurisdictions. So as previously stated, we have a nice environmental history here that we're dealing with, dating back to the late 1800s. There was a mill pond as well as a rail spur, both of which have, typically have concerns with it when it comes to environmental. There's a machine shop on the site, coal storage. The mill pond was filled, which also brings on additional concerns because we don't necessarily know where the fill came from that they're putting into the pond. And then there was also a tank farm with six large above-ground storage tanks, ASTs. And that went through different levels of ownership over time. So based on this extensive history, there isn't a known viable liable party for the site. site, which is what brings us here today, seeking the Brownfields. There isn't someone responsible that the state could go after. So the Public Act 381 really allows us to help mitigate those costs. So today, as previously stated, the property is primarily vacant. There is approximately a 1,200 square foot storage building on the site and minimal taxes being generated from the property. Everyone can read all of this, right?
Yeah.
That's fine. So we'll just do the high level here. We have a 100-foot radius shown here and the extent of exceedances as it relates to vapor intrusion issues on the site. We are planning to do a little bit of additional assessment just to ensure that we've captured everything, but essentially this can show, this shows the extent of the vapor concerns on the property as well as soil contamination and groundwater contamination that exists here in these pink and blue points. And I have Nick here, he's our technical expert, so if anyone has questions on exactly what is in the ground, he's here to help address that.
We probably don't want to know what's in the ground.
It would be nice to know. So just a recap of the project, it'll be a multi-phase project. Phase one and two will include two apartment buildings, 129 total units, one and two bedroom units included within that. And then phase three includes the townhomes. There are 15 units total, however, only three of those are within the Brownfield Plan parcels. The remainder are on that southern parcel that I had pointed out when we began.
Quick question.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Which site's going to be built on first then? The one that doesn't need the Brownfield?
The one that does.
The one that does, okay.
And the purpose of that is really, we need to set the site up so that we can get all of the utilities in and lay the site work out before we begin building the rest of the site out. So we'll, we'll start with the utilities, the site work, the infrastructure that's needed. This will be phase one here, this apartment building on the corner, and then it goes over to phase two is the second piece of apartments. And then the townhomes are the third phase. Various amenities will be associated with the development, including a rooftop terrace with a pool, dog wash station, fitness center, yoga studio, a business center, which is very important to residents these days, and bike racks, as well as electric vehicle charging stations. That slide disappeared. Well, we've talked a lot about financial need. A lot has obviously changed since the project originally began. In addition to everything that has been cited, interest rates have also gone up, so that's impacting the cash flow as well on these sites. And I will tell you firsthand, pretty much every project I'm working on is either stalled or they're looking at how they can make it cheaper, like Mr. Melia said. So really, we're trying to build the product that was originally proposed and to do that, that's why we're here, asking for the request, for the Brownfield assistance. So of that, a total of 1.9 million, I'll go through in a little bit more detail here in terms of what that includes from the standpoint of the reimbursable activities. And just to reiterate, all of that is paid by the developer upfront. They have to finance it. It's part of the cost of construction and they do not receive the reimbursement until the project is complete and the taxes have gone up. So what we call work plan exempt activities, these are essentially all the environmental assessment activities that take place on the site. So that'll include your phase one, which tells us, gives us the history of the property. The phase two is where we go and actually drill the holes. The baseline environmental assessment was completed by the developer and this provides them with liability protection with the state, essentially saying, we didn't cause these issues that are here today, but we're here to ensure through our due care that everything is handled responsibly and per the state requirements. We are also planning some additional due care investigation, as I stated, just to ensure that we fully have the extent defined of the contamination. And then, once, once the project's complete, a due care plan is prepared. It essentially outlines everything that was completed, is part of construction, as well as everything that they're obligated to continue to do as owners of a site that has had contamination on it. And then we'll also be preparing a vapor mitigation system design. So when it comes to construction activities, the vapor mitigation system installation will be a big piece of that, as well as utility migration barriers, essentially ensuring that any utilities exiting the site, that contamination couldn't use that as a pathway to exit the site at those locations. So kind of anything that's left over after construction, we're keeping it where it is. Contaminated water management will occur during construction activities, as well as contaminated soil transport and disposal. We'll have an environmental professional on site as needed documenting everything and sampling as we go. And then there will also be some limited asbestos abatement activities as it relates to the houses, or not the house, the 1,200 square foot storage building that's on the So just to kind of refresh on the tax numbers, so the base taxable value today is around 300,000. That's generating around $15,000 in taxes. As previously stated, 25.88% of that are city taxes. The remainder goes to the state and the county, and that applies to the increase as well. And then there's also an immediate increase during the length of the plan. Any school debt taxes, they're not capturable, the zoo authority's not capturable and the Art Institute is not. So once the taxes increase, they will see the immediate increase of taxes to those taxing units. And then upon completion of the plan, we're estimating around nearly 500,000 in annual taxes to be paid. And that does not include that southern parcel. That is, that's an additional estimated 72,000 in taxes upon completion. And we're here to address any questions.
Councilmember Albert.
So I just want to put together what you presented and what Nick said, so, and my earlier question. The original plan, you were going to clean up the site anyway, correct?
Yes.
So that what we're approving, the 1.9, would be the delta between what you were going to clean up the site back in 2021 versus now the cost to clean up the site, the $54 per dirt versus $30. It's just, we're approving the delta or?
No.
I'm confused by what you said.
That's fine. So, so in our rule, it's greenfield development, nothing's wrong, you just build. And if you take, I use the dirt, if you took a yard of dirt, I would cost you $30 to take it off-site, put it in a Class 1 fill site, no problem. The delta is, because it's contaminated soil, it has to go to a different landfill. That cost is, I'm making up a number again, $24 per yard. That's what we're paying for the $24 yard, not the whole 54. We could say, all the dirt's contaminated, we'll pay the full boat on it, and we agreed not to do that. We're just doing the, what it would cost if it was clean versus dirty.
So, so how much would it cost you to do this totally? Because we're, the Brownfield is 1.9, is this costing you 3.9 and we're only approving half of it? That's, I'm trying to get the number straight in my head and I'm trying to, because if you were going to do this on your own back when we approved this in 2021, and the only difference is that now the costs have gone up, so you're looking for the delta, that's one thing. So I just, I don't know if I'm asking it correctly, but help me understand, what's, what's the total cost to make that land clean and we're only approving the delta from?
I think, I think I can help answer that. Okay, so in terms of what is being approved, the activities that are being requested for approval, the activities that are requested are only associated with the environmental on the site. So these activities would not exist but for the fact that the site is contaminated. Now, when you're talking about the delta, so when we first brought this forward to staff, we had around, I think it was $600,000 additional in costs that included the phase one environmental assessment demolition, which we reduced out as well as the cost that we would have incurred regardless of contamination as it relates to soils that needed to come off-site. There's quite a bit of grading that needs to be done. If it weren't contaminated, there's still a cost associated with that. So that was removed as well. And I believe that total, in total, all of those items, we reduced it about $600,000 from the request.
So did you know in 2021 that the site was contaminated and that you were going to have to clean it up?
Yes. And, and I just want to clarify, the word cleanup, you know, that can have a lot of different meanings. So what's being done is ensuring that the site can be utilized safely from the standpoint of the users in the future, as well as ensuring that nothing's migrating. And everything is being done to ensure due care through the requirements of the state. That was known back in 2021. However, in 2021, we didn't have the 40% increase in cross across, cost across the board, as well as the increase in interest rates and, and in the labor shortages.
So you had estimated 600,000, it's now going to cost 600,000 plus 1.9 million? Is that, is my math correct?
To answer your question directly, it was known that the site was contaminated in two years ago. It wasn't known to the extent that we know now. Those costs have gone up about 40%. The overall project costs have gone up about 40%. So the, the total costs are up millions and millions of dollars. But to answer your question directly, we did know it was contaminated, not to the extent that we know now, and certainly did not have the budget that we have now. That budget at the time would have been about a million dollars. That million nine is, for the million dollars, some of it is increased scope of work for the cleanup and some of it is just an increase in actual cost for it.
But Nick, you keep talking about the delta, that's what I'm throwing off.
Yeah, but again, so two apples and oranges here. They're talking about 40% more contaminated than they thought because they hadn't done the due diligence. But then, again, it's just, for us, it's, we're not going to pay you to take the dirt out because you were going to have to take it out anyway. We're only going to pay you for dirty dirt, not clean dirt, to be removed. I don't know any other way to say it.
Is that good, Councilmember Albert?
Better, but I'm sure other, other council people will ask questions that'll help me triangulate to the right answer, so.
So just to put it a different, a different way, the costs that are included in the plan are only associated with costs for the fact that the property is contaminated. So what we did with Mr. Banda is remove anything that would have been incurred anyway if it weren't contaminated or if it were a greenfield site. So that the request that's before you today is only the costs related to the fact that the site is contaminated.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So a question, then, back to the one I had about the grants. Because of the timing of this and you're going to do it in phases anyhow, is there still time to apply for a grant with this additional money that the state has put out there to help you? Because I think that we have a good case. I want it all cleaned up only because we are close to our river and everything else, things that are important. Do you think there's a possibility to be able to push one through? Because I know they're, they're really wanting to give this money.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So we do have a development agreement in place that essentially outlines the timeframe that has to be followed with the project. And based on that timeframe to get through a grant application with the state and all the approvals that would be required, it's really unlikely that we would be able to do that and still meet the timeframes within the agreement.
Okay, but I have a question.
Can I ask a question? Answer, so before this whole thing started, Tony called me and said, can you help me try to get a grant? So we called Michelle LeCoon and she knew the site, she knows Mr. Randazzo, said, love to, but you had one grant already and you just got another one for the elevator site. I can't see any way the state of Michigan's going to give three to one community, there's 43 communities asking for million dollar grants. Now, that's before they allocated more money. So I certainly can call tomorrow and ask her with the new money in the pot, is there any possibility? I think the answer is going to be the same because so many communities are looking for it. They get three in one community, a grant, not a Brownfield application, it's probably pretty low, but chances, but I can certainly ask. I didn't know that they put more money in.
Right, they did. And I, I think it's important that we do that only because we are by the river and everything. I think that that would be something that, to have a developer come in now, they might go ahead and it'd be more positive to do so, whether or not we have three, because not all of them caused the same, but could have caused the same problem, besides the rewall project being closer to the water, so.
Sure. Councilmember Gould.
Thank you. I wasn't on council in 2021 when it was approved. I am a little confused though, so bear with me. My questions sound a little ignorant. So you had the, the whole plan approved in 2021. You knew the soil was contaminated, but you decided to not pursue Brownfield funding because you figured you could just absorb those costs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then since 2021, you've done additional soil testing and found out that the contamination is much greater than you thought? And simultaneously, the price to clean it up has increased maybe 40%. Is that all right?
Correct, yes.
And when did you, when did you do the additional soil testing? You've been doing it all along or was there one big event?
Well, during the two-year period, we've been studying it and costs have been going up almost on a monthly basis from our trucking companies and our excavation companies. So it was kind of early on in 2000, right after the project was approved, we did some more soil tests and then the just costs just kept going up and we've just kind of been, you know, studying it for the past year and we've been working on this Brownfield for the past six months, I believe.
And the fourth parcel, you've tested and it's clean?
The south parcel.
South, sorry.
Based on the environmental assessments that occurred on that site, which were conducted by ASTI Environmental, there weren't any recognized environmental conditions on that southern parcel. And if you look at the boundaries of the map, it is delineated, delineated towards the river. So the, the contamination really just exists in those northern three parcels, based on the environmental that has been done.
You're not going to do any more environmental, we're done with that then?
We are planning on doing one final additional delineation that we, PM Environmental, would like to do ahead of construction, just to ensure that we have satisfied and completely closed that radius, that we aren't anticipating any additional vapor issues to the south.
So one final question, if I may. So you'd, I think you said you'd budgeted 600,000 to clean up the Brownfield as you understood at the level of contamination in 2021?
Closer to a million dollars.
Oh, closer to a million dollars, okay. And so where does the, the 1.9 is a lot more than 40% of that?
As I said, part of it was just a scope increase that the amount of contamination was greater and then there was a 40% increase on, on all those costs. So it was both scope and inflationary causes. One other point is, this is a highly documented process if we're approved for this. So if the dollars are not spent, then the reimbursement is not, is, is great. And if the dollars are greater, that's the cost that Mr. Randazzo has to bear. This is capped on the amount of reimbursement or if the reimbursement doesn't incur in time. So there's a very significant penalty, if you will, if the, if the costs are greater, he has to incur them. The costs are less, we all benefit from a lesser cost.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Trent.
Okay, I'm going to be the third ignorant person needing to, having this explained. I'm adding the numbers up, like here we see, 1.9 million. But you're saying that initially, I mean, based on that list of contaminants and industry that was there or machine shops and whatnot, it was clear that it was contaminated. So you figured, okay, it's probably going to be close to a million. Wouldn't you take out a million from 1.9? Or are you saying it's now, is it going to be 2.9 million?
No, the, the original cost will call it roughly a million dollars. There's roughly a 300, and I'm rounding numbers, there's roughly a $350,000 scope increase, $350,000 more of contaminants than we anticipated. That would get you a million 350. If you add 40% to that, you get closer to the million nine. So the $900,000 differential over what we had anticipated would be a million dollars. 900, roughly 350 of it is increased scope and the difference of 550 would be just inflationary on the whole thing, if I've answered.
So it's, so it's scope and cost?
Correct.
Okay.
And beyond that, you know, on the whole project of 30 or 40 million dollars, whatever it is, there's a 40% increase on that as well. We're not asking for that, but that's putting the whole project is not being feasible. We're not asking for that, but that's putting the whole project is, is not being feasible. If this were normal times, and we had 3% to 5% inflation, and 3% to 5% increase in costs, we wouldn't be here tonight. We would just say, you know, it's, the million's gone to a million four, million five, there's been some increase. But when you're talking about a delta of seven, eight million dollars on the whole project, it doesn't become, appear to be feasible.
Follow-up, Councilmember Trent?
Follow-up, yeah. Yeah, I'm confused about the 10% rental increase, because...
I think I missed this one. About 10% per year. We've had about a 40% aggregate construction increase over that two-and-a-half-year period. We've had about 10% per year. So we've had about a 20% increase in rental rates, something that was at 2,200 a month in rent, would be another $450, would be closer to $2,700 a month now. But that thousand, that, that increase in rent has already been wiped out by the increase in operating costs to go with it. So the net income, although we have had increase in rent, the projected net income is the same as it would be because the projected expenses have gone up as well. But we're still stuck with a very expensive construction project with expensive interest on, component on it now as well.
So it is still worthwhile, it sounds like, to do it?
It, it would be worthwhile if we could get some assistance on this brownfield. Yes, it would be worthwhile.
I have one last question, please, Mr. Mayor. This is about, we have an original contract with you.
Development agreement, yes.
Right. Do we have to have that redrawn to make sure that...
Should be okay.
Or this is us just saying, okay, we're good, and we could change it?
Not, not for the planning commission side of it.
Okay.
There will be a reimbursement agreement, Mr. Haynes will do. That's a whole separate issue. So that's a different document that they'll, they've already been working on together if this was to be approved. But the actual planning commission document we committed to the planning commission council, we're not touching that timeframe, which kind of puts them in a little bit of a bind if they don't get going here pretty soon, so.
I got it. All right. It was, if, if you'd had a while, I guess I'm just, yeah, I'm glad that you're going to clean it up. It just, we're just trying to make sure we understand all the facts. Thank you for explaining.
No, thank you. This is, we've, Jessica's done 1,000 of these. We've done dozens of these, and we have found, and we just did the first one that West Bloomfield has ever seen. We just did the first one that Commerce has ever seen. So we understand that, that, that bodies such as yours are going through a learning curve through this, and it's, it's a complicated issue. So we do appreciate the time and the expertise and your willingness to commit your, your staff and your resources to it, because it is kind of the wave of development in the future to clean up important sites in nice communities.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So given the extensive review that we went through to approve this project, and then given the two years of it, the property sitting fallow, basically, now we've incurred all these additional increases in cost, right? So I'm hard, I'm having a hard time saying, well, I should absorb that, right? I understand the, the, the request and the assistance. So would you be amenable if we said, okay, seven's too long. How about four? Would you be amenable to that?
Probably not. But let me explain a couple of things. The taxes ramp up, you know, every year, the taxes are going to go up, as, you know, next year, they'll go up, but the building would only be partially built. So then the following year, the, you know, assuming it's occupied, it'll have one assessment. Once it becomes fully assessed in year three or four, that's when the taxes really ramp up. So it's, it's not a linear equation where taxes in year four, four, seventh.
But here, here's the struggle. During the debate, brownfield was not even considered, right? So now we're, two years later, more than two years, and now we get to consider brownfield. I understand the, the benefit to that, but how about five?
Again, the majority of the taxes come in that sixth and seventh year, and Jessica might be able to address it more, more fully, but, you know, to...
But so, okay, the frustrating part is, we saw a project that would generate tax revenue, right? Now we're faced with a project that will be well-deferred to generate tax revenue. And that's...
Correct, but the, the real risk for all of us is that the project doesn't happen, so there's no increase in taxes. And Mr. Randazzo and the community sitting with a site that's contaminated, not cleaned up, and has to wait for a different economic period. So that's the real risk. But the real benefit is that this gets built, and then the annual taxes in year eight are 500, approximately $500,000, and the city captures 26% of that. And you really get a project that's very meaningful to the downtown, very meaningful to the community, and all of a sudden, you're collecting $125,000 a year in taxes. So I'm, I'm viewing it from a different angle. I'm viewing it, how do we both win, rather than how do we both lose on it?
And that's what I'm trying to do as well. And that's why I'm offering, to proffer a lower payback period, if you will.
Understood. Mr. Mayor, if I may, part of the problem was at the planning commission level, and I, the, the planning commission got pushed hard into making him do the, send a phased project. When he came in, he was going to build 129 units altogether. The planning commission, based on the pressure from the residents, said, people kept saying, how do you know you can absorb all 129? So he gave in and said, I'll build it in two phases. I'll commit to phase one, we'll have a face on it that just has some windows out, to take the windows out to build the second phase. That pushed this thing to an eight-year development. Wasn't his idea. That was the planning commission to, to get it through with the residents. There's a lot of, two years of pressure we went through, and that was the compromise. So that kind of made it difficult for us to ramp this up quick to get it to a five-year council meeting. I think it's a legitimate ask. It's just, the way the development agreement was set up, it pushes it out to seven or eight years just to get it done. So the residents didn't want construction going on hard, when we told them, now you're going to have construction for eight years instead of four years. So I just want to bring that, remind people of that.
Mayor Potem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for clarifying the economics of the cost of what you're asking for. I, I did have questions around that. That makes sense to me. Understand costs have gone up, and I, I fully am aware that your, your revenues are also going to go up. You know, it's just going to take you longer to get to those. I, I do think it's important, I think, I think brownfields are important for our community. I think it's a win-win approach. I think it gets something for our residents, for our community. We get a site that gets cleaned up, we get a beautiful property, we get some new neighbors, we get, you know, some enjoyment, and, and yes, eventually we get some tax revenue from it. So I, I think they are a win-win. I do want to know a bit more about the contaminants, so probably a question for Nick, and what did we find in the soil? I think the residents are probably going to want to know, what's, what's in the neighboring site? You know, we all love the trail, we all, all love our river.
Yeah, so predominantly, the impact identified in soil and groundwater is likely attributed to the ASTs or above-ground storage tanks that were once occupied the property. So it's all petroleum compounds. You know, I know that doesn't mean a whole lot, but volatiles, that's why we have the vapor controls within the building that's going to be developed. That's exactly why that we're, we're implementing gasketting on any of the storm utilities, keep that impact where it is, that whatever little bit remains after the site is developed, keep it from entering the storm systems, going to our waterways, migration barriers to keep it from migrating along the utility corridors, and then obviously treating any contaminated groundwater and/or soil that's encountered during development in an appropriate manner. So it would all either be taken to a licensed disposal facility, essentially.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, unlike the site for the rewall site, if you remember, that was ITT Higbee, they had some, Jen, you guys could probably talk, the nastiest things that can never break down in 3,000 years. They literally have a tachinide barrier in the ground, 15 feet deep, that's iron, that's charged, and then the water goes through that, gets grabbed, and there's a little building on the corner across from the fire hall, that's a pump that's constantly cleaning that out, and then they have 18 wells that they have to test every three months to make sure it's not getting through that wall. That's the, you couldn't dig that out, it's, and it's going underneath Payne Creek with the volatile, with the petrochemicals, that's the best, it sounds terrible, that's the best contamination you could have, because it's, it's vapor more than anything. If you smell gases, when they dig the dirt, you'll smell the, the gas. But it wasn't the bad, bad stuff from industrial chemicals that was there. Luckily, on this site, that was the case, and look how close it is to the Clinton River, so that would have been horrible.
That's the best bad decision?
Thank you. That's fairly vanilla.
I do have a question along Councilmember Gould's, on the, the parcel that is not included. Because I, you know, I, I'm not Pat McKay, but I, I do recall that there was a train accident in that general facility, so area. It just makes me wonder, you know, if there really is going to be some contamination there, and I, I'm just wondering if we're going to be having a discussion on that in the future. You probably don't have an opinion on that.
Again, I think what's important to understand is, seven years is capped, the million nine is capped. If there are additional costs beyond that, whether it's the scope increase on the contaminated parcel, or if additional stuff is found on the uncontamination, we can't, can't come back and ask for it. You've approved the brownfield.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I don't want to ask this question, but I have to. So because of the delay in things, because of the costs and everything, still items are in short supply, you know, trying to get things. Will there be any delay in actually finishing this project that you, you know, from, if we, once we say yes? You know, in a couple of years, will there be a reason why we can't finish off the south end of it, or just finish it all off?
I'm Tony Randazzo, by the way. We don't foresee that. It's, I don't know if you're aware of it, but we've actually already started legally. We got permission. And our intent is to continue with this. Part of the thing that a lot of people don't realize, unless you're intimately involved in, and I know you are, in construction, they've gone up exponentially, insanely. So what does that mean? It means that we probably have to have more equity on it and not get any return on investment. But, you know, that's what we choose to do. Why do we need the amount of time to pay for it? Because of that. Prices never really go down, even though people think they do. And thus, they stay flat. And I actually think 40% is light. It's more than that, but, you know, that's our issue. But the fact that that interest rate, which people don't really realize, but when you're dealing with this kind of volume of money, it's doubled.
Right.
You know, it was, you know, 3%, probably, I don't even like to think about it, probably close to what, probably no better than I do, six and a half?
Seven and a half.
Well, I don't know until we actually, because we take a variable amount. When you borrow the money right now, it's more like 9%. You know, the variable rate.
Yep.
But then when you get a fixed rate, you're subjected to whatever the T-bill is at that time. So we're committed to it. We've been here, you know, since the early 70s. I believe in downtown Rochester, particularly that area, I think badly needs to be resurrected. We're kind of the first people to go in. And as far as someone brought up the rents, when you're at that exponentially high rent, you can't really raise it much more, because there's a limit. It doesn't matter how big you are, the units, there's a stall limit at that higher level. And we, we're trying to keep it as moderate as we can, mostly because I grew up here and I just believe in the area. And I believe, I want to be, I want to be here. I want to finish up one of these last signature projects, because I like it. With your help, that can be done.
Right.
You don't have to do it. I think it's a good thing for everybody. I think it gets done, and I think it resurrects that area. It's, it's a little bit, I mean, it could just stay vacant the way that it is. I don't want it to be. But then nobody gets anything, and hopefully it propels that area to get done, and these other projects that have been forever not getting done. And the reason is, is as we go through these economic cycles, people stall. You know, people retire. Because it takes an enormous amount of effort and equity to, to do these. You know, when you build horizontally, okay, prices are cheap, way, way cheaper. But when you do this, they go up very, very high. There's fire suppression, all sorts of things, and they're crazy expensive. But that's what we do, and that's the risk we take. And if it takes a long time for us to get paid back, that's our deal. That's our problem. Thank you.
Good.
Further questions?
I, I did have one comment. Councilmember Sage and I were on the planning commission. When, when you first started talking about this project, you, you talked about you weren't going to need to borrow any money?
We probably wouldn't have.
Okay, so that's changed.
But it's gone up, it's gone up so insanely expensive. But keep in mind, this process took a lo, a long time to do, although it turned out great. But well, how long we been at this, since 17?
Seventeen.
It was a long time. It was before that. So things have, you know, it was, the project's better. But the fact is, we haven't set idle. You know, we, we've been moving on with our careers, and you don't put 100% equity in any project, although this one would have been one of the few we would have done that. We can't do that now.
Okay.
You just can't. It's not practical.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to confirm, with approval, you will not be coming back to us with an additional request?
No, that's our problem, not yours.
Unless the city wanted to apply for grant money, but we wouldn't come back on the brownfield.
So we met with Ms. Bacon, and I pushed her hard, because, you know, we're proud people. We wanted to go about our lives. She said, I, you know, there's other sites, you already have one approved.
Right.
And she tried really hard, and they said, no.
Right.
Because there's other cities that need more of it. And this is perceived as a, a more affluent area, and they already gave one. She says we have to spread it out.
No, and I know, I just know that they just put another 50 million in there, so I'm hoping as they're working on this budget, that it's an opportunity for you to be able to apply and receive something to offset in the future anyhow, so.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure the place down the street, you know, there's probably other sites, and I don't know that, Nick, that are going to need it, but...
But I would like to ask.
Right, no, that's...
Are there further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. So now we will open the public hearing. If anybody has questions, we will open the public hearing at 8:26. Public hearing's open. Is there anybody who would like to comment?
Your Honor?
Yeah, we had some correspondence that I think everybody has.
Correct. And just for the record, it was from First Street Loss, and I can be described as strongly disagreeing and objecting to the brownfield.
Right, I think everybody got that this afternoon.
We got an email this morning, and it's before you this evening.
Okay. We will close the public hearing at 8:27. Council, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I understand how important it is to have clean land here, so we can have developers come in and build on this. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the brownfield as presented by city administration.
Support. So a motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Is there further discussion?
Can I read this from Mercy, so I get this right? Our council will resolve to approve the establishment of a riverfront, of the riverfront-placed brownfield redevelopment project, within the municipal limits of which the authority shall exercise its powers, all pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, being Act 381 of the Public Acts of the State of Michigan of 1996, as amended.
Councilmember Peterson, is that what you meant to say?
Yes, sir. Exactly.
Councilmember Sage, I support. You good with that? I'm good. Further comments? I, I'd just like to say, you know, we went through this whole process, and I understand what's going on, and I, I will support this. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
There you go.
Congrats. And, yeah, we expect to see shovels and... Madam Clerk, could you maybe click up the heat a couple?
Yes, please. Just make it hot.
Thank you to our brownfield folks for staying. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brownfield Committee Chairman Hauser. Thank you, Guinness.
Counsel.
Thank you.
Counsel Hane, thank you.
Counsel Hane, you any, anything for the road? Just kidding.
You were here, you didn't say anything.
Just kidding.
He's tempted.
Yeah, you shouldn't really ask a lawyer to give another opinion. I don't know. Onto legislative deliberation. Is a consideration ordinance to mend Chapter fourteen Cemetery of the Code of the City of Rochester, section fourteen ten, general rules and regulations regarding dogs on cemetery property to allow by permit only. Mr. City Manager.
We worked with our attorney, Mr. Crot, to listen to what the council had said. Brian, who's online with us, our deputy clerk, called a bunch of neighboring communities to get some baseline information, how they handled it. And then, Mayor, when we were at the DAR dedication at the cemetery, Mr. Pixley was there. And who better to ask about rules in cemeteries than Mr. Pixley? And he said that, I think he said eighty percent of the cemeteries he works with don't regulate dogs not being allowed. Common sense, post-rule, saying, please be prof, please be courteous of what's going in. He did acknowledge what Mr. Crot found, that during burials, or if there's activities going on in the cemetery, that we would put on a sign, much like we do in the park chief, I think we have a sign that says, if there's an event in the park, you can't have your dog here. So, it would be that same professional courtesy. So, Jeff, if you want to just go over with some of the things that you had to do.
Mr. City Attorney?
Sure. So, in the packet today, our, so if you called the last meeting, I believe it was moved for first reading introduction, with some requests to have some tweaks, as well as looking at surrounding communities, which City Manager Banda just talked about. Well, I didn't intend the document in the file to show two different colors online. It actually is for TUDIS, because they can see where the changes are from last meeting. So, I tried to take the comments of City Council, and the concerns, and place them in the language. And so, those specific things were, that there, there was a concern about dogs running onto grave sites, and in fact, I think it was Auburn Hills, I believe, that had some language about permitting on established drives and pathways, to kind of help clarify. I think someone had, was a concern, like, what does it mean? And so, maybe that was some good added language. And then, also, that what City Manager Banda said is, pets are not allowed in the cemetery during special events or during burial service. And obviously, we kept in the other portions, which was, were important, about the only pets having park permits, and being on a leash at all times, at six-foot length or less, and that all waste is immediately removed and properly disposed of. So, those are the, I believe I captured all the concerns, and so, if City Council wishes to proceed, then the appropriate motion would be to move it for second reading and adoption.
Counselmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, after receiving quite a few phone calls from people who watched our meeting, they, people, the general consensus was that they are not in favor of us allowing this. We have a sign that's been there for years that says, no pets, please. Of course, everyone ignores the sign. People are afraid that no one will pick up after their pet, whether we put things there. They don't want it to be cluttered up with places where you pull the bags or whatever. And then, also, I mean, to me, I see it as additional work, that DPW, or someone's going to have to go and police the cemetery and keep it clean, because otherwise, it's going to smell, and you're going to have all kinds of things going on, because, just because you put it in a container. I mean, it's not going to be good. I think it's, I don't think it's the right thing to do for the community. I understand that it's listed as a park, and I think that is just for purposes at the state level for that, but it truly is not a park. I think it needs to be respected. We've invested a lot of money and time into the park, and, into the cemetery, and it needs to be kept that way. And right now, by the behaviors of the people who are in there, or do walk their dogs around the cemetery, they do not pick up after their animals. And I'd hate to see something happen. And I don't believe that our DPW should go over there and have to clean up areas, just to be able, come in and have burials, et cetera, or for people who want to go and visit there, when they visit their loved ones. So, also, Mayor, I wanted to know, how do we come up with a ten mile per hour through the cemetery, instead of, like, lower? I mean, ten miles per hour is kind of fast, I thought, for inside the cemetery. But that's in the ordinance too, so, just a question. But no, I think that we need to be very mindful and respectful of what a cemetery truly is. And if we continue, we continually talk about how great our area is for parks and trails. We have plenty of places to walk our dogs and pets. There's some people who walk cats too, so, everybody, I mean, it just, you want to be able to, you know, go to the places that we already have, and keep this, keep this a very sacred area. Thank you.
Counselmember Albrecht?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the city attorney for making the changes. I had suggested some of those changes. I like Counselmember Peterson also spoke to a lot of residents. I'm a dog lover. I have had a dog most of my life. I walk him, and when he has to go to the bathroom, he goes to the bathroom. And sometimes, that's going to be on the edge of a grave, or wherever the, you know, I can't pull him back onto the sidewalk, because that's not, just not how he operates. We are a dog-loving community. Our dogs are welcome on our, and I also have the pet park permit for my dog, as, and he's registered. We are a dog-loving community. I can take him to the municipal park. I can bring him downtown. We have a lot of green space. But I also just can't get by the fact that this is a cemetery and not a dog park. And I'm, and I'm being a little exaggerated there by saying that, but, you know, we're looking for a solution to a problem that currently exists, because people are bringing their dogs there, whether we have this ordinance or not. And those people are not going to read this ordinance. Those people are not going to, you know, do all the things we've put in here. And I don't want the new chief of police having his, his police force distracted, chasing down dog owners in the cemetery, versus protecting our residents on more important things. So, for respect of cemeteries and love of dogs, I can't support this ordinance.
Counselmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, question for the Madam Clerk. So, if I have a crematorium spot in the cemetery, am I allowed to bury my pet with me?
No. The ordinance specifically says...
You cannot.
No pet burials.
Okay. So, we're discussing an ordinance about pets, which are often considered parts of a family, right? And yet, we willingly allow, there's deer that live in our cemetery, but we're not upset about that. But now, we want to say, well, don't bring your pet to the cemetery. So, I guess I'm, I'm struggling here.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. So, I also have spoken with quite a few people in the past couple of weeks, dog lovers, non-dog lovers, people who have loved ones buried in the cemetery. I think the changes and the additional language are very helpful. You know, must be on a leash, must stay on established drives and pathways, you know, not allowed during special events, and of course, during a burial service, to be respectful. I would also, I support this, and I will make a motion, but I think if this were approved, I think we should have a bring-back within ninety days to monitor it and see, is this working, is it not working? So, I guess I will make a motion to move this for second reading and adoption, as presented, with a bring-back to City Council within ninety days.
So, is a motion by the Mayor Protem, is there support? Support. Support by Counselmember Sage. Further discussion? Counselmember Peterson?
Well, pets are different than wildlife, and we can't control wildlife. So, I think that's something that you can't control. But as far as the pets, though, I still believe that, based on the amount of residents who feel that it is a violation to have just pets roaming in there, whether or not we put this in writing or not, they continually walk their dogs in town without leashes, and they continually do not pick up. And I really don't think it's a good use of city tax dollars to put something, put this ordinance out there, to where we have one more thing to maintain, that is not, when we have everything else out there for them to go to. We have the parks, we have the trails, we have sidewalks, we have everything. There's no need for them to be in the cemetery. Thank you.
Counselmember Trent?
Yeah, I struggled with this one, because I said, oh, this is a great idea, because I lived next to the cemetery for twenty-five years, so I could be a bit of authority on this. And people did bring their dogs in, and they were, they were, they were careful with them. I never heard any, any problems for the twenty-five years I was there. The thing that I like about trying things out is that you give people a chance, and because there's enough people that do want this, and that say they will behave themselves. But if they don't, you just, then it ends. And then, it's tried, it didn't work, and, you know, maybe it'll be okay. I mean, I like things that you give people a chance, and then, and if they mess it up, then it's their fault.
Counselmember Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of like I said last time, I think there's very few places in our community that are as sacred, and should hold that level of reverence that our cemetery. I really do appreciate the changes. This is better than it was. I think it's more palatable. But for me, it's really about the single person going out there and trying to commune with, with their loved one, which dogs would be allowed walking right by them then. Leash gets stuck on a grave chasing a squirrel, who knows? I know they're supposed to be on six-foot leashes. I just, you know, like Counselmember Albrecht, I love my dog. Dog goes everywhere. Take it to Bake House, get the little cupcake with the bone on it, you know, take the Starbucks, get the pup cup, what have you. Goes everywhere, drinks the water on Main Street. But I just think it's too much. I think it's very disrespectful for the citizens that are out there, trying to have some peace. And I, yeah, we can't prevent the deer, maybe. I kind of like the deer. Like Counselmember Peterson said, it's very nice, having some wildlife around. I think that adds to the peaceful vibe of the beautiful cemetery and everything. But not, not for me, not on dogs. I can't support this.
Counselmember Albrecht?
Yeah, I just want to respond to, Counselmember Trent said, you know, the people have asked for this. I don't believe the people have asked for this. I think this was something that administration came up with. Contrary, the people have said on numerous social media and comments and discussions I've had, that they don't want this ordinance. So, I don't think this is something we try, because if we put this in, even with the ninety-day look back, there's going to be, there's, we're not going to go back in time. I think this ordinance, once it goes, if it passes, which I'm not going to support, again, is disrespectful to the people who are buried there, or the people who, who have relatives or loved ones there. And, and again, I have enough places to walk my dog, as do all dog lovers. The cemetery is not that place.
Counselmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I know that even, you know, leader dogs doesn't go into the cemetery. But my point is, I don't understand why we would even try to do something, when all these years, there's been a sign there that says, no pets, please, and everyone ignores it anyhow. So, I mean, we have, you know, are we, have we policed any of that? No, we haven't. So, why would we waste our police officers' time, when they have better things to do than trying to police a cemetery for people who still continually enter a cemetery, when it says, no pets, please?
Counselmember Trent?
Well, okay, those are some good points. I guess I need to understand that if there is a vote, no, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to, I mean, we're not going to let pets in the park. I mean, we are going to let pets in the park.
Cemetery.
Cemetery, I mean. So, does that mean that, will they now start giving tickets and policing it? Is that the next step?
In theory, they should, right? That's, the sign says not to. I mean, that's up to the police, or up to what this board does, but...
Okay.
The sign, yeah. Counselmember Peterson?
Yeah, for City Manager Banda, then, have we discussed this with the DPW? Do they have enough man-hours to make sure that that place is cleaned up all the time from any dog, anything that's collected there?
Again, they, it wouldn't necessarily be them. We have people that cut the grass, so it would be, we'd have to see if it becomes a problem. If it becomes a problem, we'd have to deal with it.
Well, no, it still needs to be cleaned up, but we don't have a contract with the one.
We would not send DPW, we don't send police officers to write tickets. We will not send DPW folks that are looking for dog feces, like, on a regular basis. What we would do is, I, when I talk to Alec and to Jason, they would communicate with the grasscutters, and if they said, hey, this is an issue, then we would know and be able to handle it. And then, we might come back and rescind this decision, because it does not work. That would be my answer.
Counselmember Albrecht?
So, the city manager said, we're not going to send police in there, we're not going to send DPW. Why are we even looking at this?
Right.
This was not something that our residents asked for. This is something that administration came up, trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. And, and, and I don't know why we're, we're even, we're even considering this. So, again, you know where I stand on this.
Right, and I will say that part of this was me, but I talked to residents, and the residents in my neighborhood where I live, asked, we're going to get in trouble eventually, why can't you just say it's okay if you're not enforcing it? So, there were residents that brought that up, so.
Here, Protem Salvia?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. It has been residents that brought it up. I've, I've heard this for multiple years, even through the Cemetery Committee, people who are, been involved with the cemetery, asking this question.
So, I'll just say that I, as well as, like, other people, was actually surprised how much I heard on this issue. So, this is a big issue in town. And, and a lot of what people said to me was, you know, a place of respect, you know, if we open it up, we're going to have dogs. And, you know, not that this makes any difference, but, you know, I have a family member in the cemetery. And, yeah, I guess I probably don't want dogs walking around there and, you know, things. So, after careful consideration, I will not vote for this. So, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
No.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
No.
Gould?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
So, the motion fails.
Awesome.
Thank you.
No dogs in the cemetery.
No dogs in the cemetery.
Like it's been posted for a long time.
And...
Oops.
No.
I guess I'm not done.
City Manager, now your neighborhood.
Well, I'll make sure, hey, we give it a try. That's all right.
You did.
That's good.
Yeah, you did.
Onto reports and regular businesses. Before we did that, Mayor Protem Salvia, did you have some comments on that?
Yes, I guess, I guess regarding item B, if we can talk about those as all infrastructure items, I would like to make a motion to table item B, which is the request to approve curb and gutter replacement. We have an infrastructure meeting on Thursday, which includes a resident. We've asked that resident to give us feedback on projects like this. So, I think we need to have that infrastructure meeting, and then bring this to the next city council meeting.
Support. Motion by the Mayor Protem, support by Counselmember Albrecht, to table item B. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, no, that's okay. Well, I just, I want to, what is the resident's concern, or some, just so I...
Just we haven't had the meeting?
Because you haven't had the meeting regarding this, regarding a resident that lives there?
No.
No, not just the resident, but our regular process with Infrastructure Committee, which includes a resident. We scheduled the meeting for Thursday. We discussed it at a previous council meeting, that we wanted to have that meeting before additional infrastructure projects were reviewed at council. additional infrastructure projects were reviewed at council.
So somebody on the Infrastructure Committee has not had a chance to have a final decision on this.
Okay, but this is just for curb and gutter replacement?
Okay.
Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
I guess, I don't understand why, though.
Yes, no?
Yeah, I guess, yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Yeah, just to try to clarify again, the Infrastructure Committee's meeting Thursday, and so they just wanted to give the entire Infrastructure Committee a chance to look at this issue.
Well, but I guess for city administration, so the DPW Director.
It's fine. It's, we talked about it, the committee, it's just a number, but that's okay. We'll go Thursday, and we'll bring it back July 10th. That's not a problem. I don't think, I don't.
It's not time-sensitive.
It's not time-sensitive. I don't think we on purpose circumvented any system. We had talked about it, it just became a number now that we want to bring forward, but I, it's fine.
Okay, so now we're on to A's consideration request to approve a project to replace asphalt park pathways and install a new stormwater culvert. Mr. City Manager Alec, Mr. DPW, come on up. Welcome.
Little Mayor and Council. Some room here. So city staff's requesting city council to approve a quote from Bowen Paving for a total of $59,856 to replace an asphalt park pathway, install a new stormwater culvert, and reed that pathway. We reached out to four different companies and only received two bids back. Bowen was the lowest bid. There's a map just after the agenda memo that kind of shows a site plan of the area, so it's going from Albertson all the way past the park's maintenance building. There's been, in this section of path, it's pretty deteriorated, there's a lot of standing water, especially where it connects to Albertson, there's a lot of runoff of some of the dirt on the trail, too. So this will help alleviate a lot of those issues and get us to a point where vast majority of the parks' pathways, paths in the park are looking pretty brand-new.
Very good. Mayor Protemsalvia.
Thank you, thank you for bringing this forward. I have noticed this and wondered, when are we going to get to it? So I was happy to see this in the package, so make a motion to approve as presented to award the contract to Bowen Construction.
I support.
A motion by Mayor Protemsalvia, support by Councilmember Trent, discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage. Oh, I'm sorry, he stepped out. Trent.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you've noticed, we did a great job on the backside of the pond. The concrete was done in two days. They took it out one day, finished the second day, and we've got nothing but pictures sent to us, Facebook comments like, wow, it's wider, its drainage is fixed. They did an amazing job. That contractor did a wonderful job and restored the day after, and it's being seeded, so we're very happy with that.
Plant some later plants.
Very good. Next is a consideration request to approve the mill and fill road maintenance and concrete curb replacement work on South Castell Avenue. Also, the DPW Director signed a cost participation agreement with Oakland County for the LRIP grant.
Yep, so city staff have been approved for an LRIP grant through Oakland County to get reimbursed 50% for a local road maintenance project. South Castell is being proposed because half the road will be redone with the upcoming DWSR, I guess they started today, but.
Today.
DWSRF project plan, where we are doing a complete reconstruct of a block of South Castell. So city staff had submitted an application for 50% refund to do a mill and fill to complete the rest of the road, to give the entire road a new surface instead of just that one block being done. The LRIP program has been provided by the county since 2016 to assist local communities with funding road maintenance projects that impact the surrounding economy. So it's really only tailored towards, not necessarily major roads, but roads that, you know, are kind of feeders in the downtowns, or, you know, you can show a impact to the local economy, so to speak. We've received three different quotes. Bowen Paving was also the lowest for this as well. Cadillac Asphalt is the company that the Ponyo is using as their sub for paving on the DWSRF section, but Bowen ended up being the lowest bid, so coordinate with Cadillac to pave around the same time. The application we submitted estimated around $45,000, and almost forgot to mention, not just road milling and fill, but also some concrete curb work at First and South Castell as well, to help with some standing water drainage issues, standing water drainage issues, too. So the lowest bid came in at $33,945, and then we can request 50% reimbursement for that. Our grant application, we estimated $45,000, so we can go up to that to get reimbursed for up to $22,500.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So Alec, thank you. When will this start, and how are you going to redirect traffic during that time, and how long will it last?
The mill and fill or the total reconstruct work?
No, total, well, whatever you're doing first right now.
Yep, so we won't go in, we won't go in and do the mill and fill sections towards the end of the DWSRF project, so they'll be tearing up the road here in the next few weeks to start doing the underground utility work. And I can imagine they'll be starting to do above-ground paving for another, what do you think, month and a half, maybe, maybe six weeks? So I'd imagine by two-month mark, we'll be seeing this work being done.
Okay, so how are they going to work with school?
Yep, so we met D2 route, yep, so they've worked with schools already, should be done by then. Then we're working with Rochester Hills to go down Fort Peas Beach West to Harding, and then out. So it's a, it's a, I met today with Rochester Hills, it's a huge inconvenience for a lot of folks.
Oh, right, I know, it's a very bad area.
But it's a really bad road, too, so.
So how are the people in the development of Cumberland going to be able to get in and out?
And so, yeah, they'll, the crews on site will always be there to help any resident get in and out wherever they need to go. So they may have it closed down to through traffic, but there'll always be someone on site to get someone in and out wherever they, there may be a 20-minute period where they just go, "Hey, the mill is right here, I'm sorry, 20 minutes, we can't, we've got to do this section." But outside of something like that, they should always be able to get someone in and out.
And they'll be notified ahead of time if that might have to have that delay?
Absolutely, and they'll have a contact. We have, I don't know if we're having a website in this one, we're doing the same thing we did for all the other DWSRFs, mail, garbage, all that stuff, so that's been communicated to residents already, so.
Maybe we'll be looking to put signs out by Livernoy and Harding, just because I know there's lots of people who take Harding from Livernoy downtown to let them know that that cut-through won't be available for a couple of months.
Right, because it's going to really tax those neighborhoods in there.
So they'll have to take the extra two-minute-long way around.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes, while I support this and I'll vote to approve it, I just wanted to touch base, go back to what Mayor Protemsalvia said. We have an Infrastructure Committee, and it just, it seems over the last two, three months, these have come up before we've had a chance to talk about it at the Infrastructure Committee meetings. So I would suggest to administration that we increase the cadence of those meetings because I know, you know, with respect to what you and your DPW staff, I know a lot of these things are time-sensitive, going to get the estimates, all those kinds of things. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but we do have a committee made up of city council members, residents, experts, and, you know, we haven't met in, you know, three or four months, and we've had things come before us without becoming before the Infrastructure Committee. I'm glad we postponed the one so that can be talked about this Thursday. So again, I'm reaching out to you as the DPW Director and to our City Manager that we have to increase the cadence of the Infrastructure Meetings, maybe it's, especially during the construction season. Maybe, you know, during the winter, we don't have to meet as much, but we should be meeting monthly, starting in April, so that we can have these things, so that when they come before city council, they've been properly vetted, we've talked about them, we've given you our support, or, you know, where we think we should look and everything else like that, and then gives you the appropriate amount of time to go get your estimates, get your crew lined up and everything else like that. So I understand what you're going through, Alec, but if we're not using the Infrastructure Committee meeting, Infrastructure Committee as designed, abolish it then, or, but I don't want to do that. I'd rather just increase the amount of meetings during the construction season.
I totally understand, and I'll coordinate with City Manager Banda for guidance on that.
I'll make a motion then to approve awarding this contract to Bowen Paving as outlined in Alex's memorandum.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht. Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll. I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson.
Yep, real quick. So will we get with Rochester Hills to have a sign put out on, at Livernoy and Harding?
He just said that, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's the sign you're going to put out on Livernoy? Okay, I just.
We won't close the road down, obviously, right now.
No, no, but just to let them know, it's expect delays and issues, okay.
There are some people out there that think those types of signs don't apply to them, so we'll still get people going down there, but.
No, I know, it's just, it is frustrating when you start down the road and you don't realize that there's a big issue and you have to go around. But I would like to, I would, I don't mind this coming before this because I do trust that it has been vetted by administration. I actually don't feel the need that we need to have everything going through the Infrastructure Committee meeting all the time. I would prefer to have all the experts come before us, so then the whole public is hearing everything, so I'm good either way. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Alec. Next, we have the mayor appointment of councilmembers to dementia-friendly and age-friendly committee. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Trent and Councilmember Peterson to this committee that is really picking up steam, I think.
Yes, I'll just add that I've been on it for over a year and a half now with them, so it's been an integral part of what I've been doing.
Next is receipt of the check register. Are there any questions on that? Okay, on to report of the various boards and commissions. First is a report from the Older Person Center, Councilmember Mayor Protemsalvia.
Thank you. So speaking of dementia-friendly, OPC, we met June 1st. We're starting the budgeting process, so the budget will be coming soon before Rochester City Council, but probably one of the exciting things that we're going to be hearing more about, they're launching a campaign that is the brand refresh. So we had some announcements on this in the past, but I'm really happy to say that it's going to be called OPC, Social and Activity Center. So we realize that there is so much brand equity already in our beloved OPC, so a refreshed brand logo, still call it OPC, Social and Activity Center, so more to come on that. Still talking a lot about transportation, increased transportation services through OPC as a result of the millage. Pandemic levels have returned, or pre-pandemic levels have returned in terms of people coming and using the OPC, as well as within the budget, you're going to see capital expenditures, improving the building. Also on transportation, they have hired a Director of Transportation. Her name is Ann Murphy, and she starts to June 19th, so they are staffing out for this increased level of service. Thank you.
Very good. I'd just like to add that the OPC Friday night had their soiree. That was a big success. I think it was sold out, and they raised, I think, $100,000 for Meals on Wheels, so it was very successful, and they had a Plan B. It was supposed to be outside, but they moved it inside, and it was very nice. Next is a report from City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Trent.
Yes, so City Beautiful Commission's been busy. On June 14th, the Never Forget Garden of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier was dedicated with dignitaries from the City of Rochester, the Community Foundation of Greater Rochester, who had donated a bench, the money for a bench, and the Daughters of the American Revolution. People are invited to visit and sit on the new bench for quiet and reflective moments. Rochester Pollinators donated 160 native plants and 12 shrubs to the Rochester Municipal Park, and $1,390 to the Butterfly Pledge from our first six months of proceeds that we've raised, mostly from the native plant sales at the farmer's market. The display case that was in the lobby of City Hall that was showcasing what the City Beautiful Commission did, Dinosaur Hill and Rochester Pollinators do in the City of Rochester, is now moved to the Rochester Hills Public Library for June and July because it was a very popular exhibit. Sponsorships are available now, apparently, from Mr. City Manager Banda told us that they are available for benches at the Mount Avon Cemetery, tree plaques, and the Sugar Maple Grove. Can you buy park tables?
They got installed, we have two sponsors, they got installed this past week, but Jason sent pictures.
Yeah, we have, yes, we have picnic tables, and we have shaded. Shelters, sorry. Late. Shaded shelters over picnic tables for inclement weather, and if you want to get out of the sun. They're quite lovely. Park's master plan will be updated beginning in August for 2023 with some City Beautiful Commission board members will be on that, and I'm hoping I will, too. The Sugar Maple Grove ribbon-cutting ceremony is coming up for August 3rd at 6:30 p.m. It's going to be an exciting event. And then we have our Bluebird House update. It's a very important one. The swallows have moved in, and I guess there's no bluebirds, and Colin Pettick will be putting up two more Bluebird Houses at the Southern Matwado to see if we can get some bluebirds at that time. All right, and that's it.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple updates. First, on Bridge 31.7 and grant opportunities, we have submitted our application for the Michigan DOT Transportation Alternatives Program. We wait a funding decision then on July 19th, which we're very hopeful for. We'll keep you posted. And secondly, we will be submitting the fourth round, Tier Four of the DNR's Spark Grants has now opened, and we will submit our final application there by July 26th. Second item, so we currently have eight license agreements with various businesses that share the land, if you will, with the trail. We have not reviewed these agreements in over 15 years. We've finally done so and have come to a negotiation with each of the businesses to, based on the Consumer Price Index, we've adjusted the fees that we charge them, and they're all reasonable, and everyone has concurred, so that is nice. We had a presentation from the One Wheelers, so.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Yes. So we're looking, we're going to reach out to our attorney to look for guidance from the state as to whether we are mandated to allow them on the trail or not, or whether we can, based on our bylaws, halt that. We'll see, I'll keep you posted on that one. And lastly, on the Southeast Rochester property, the Trust has asked for a revised site plan, which I think we're working with AEW right now. Once we can get that done, I think they want to write a check, and we could get this built by fall, so. Do I need to follow up on that, or?
No, I can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So are the One Wheels not allowed now?
They're out there.
I know they are.
We don't know what our legal position is on the trail.
Kind of like the thing said that you were, it was mandatory that you had to, so.
Right, right.
Whenever I see those people, they always look unstable. Go down. Next, we have a receipt of a report from the Sister City Committee, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. The Sister City Committee meeting was really focused on the Memorial Day Parade recap. We had met, the Memorial Day Committee had met at the Rochester Regional Chamber right before that meeting, so really, we had two meetings together. The Sister City Committee includes Councilmember Gould and Trent, and then three council members from Rochester Hills, and really, the six of us were the ones that began working on the Memorial Day Parade last year. So we really talked about the positives and some areas for improvement for the parade. And first off, I'd like to thank Maggie Bobbitts, who is the President of the Rochester Regional Chamber, and her staff, who again, did a yeoman's work before, during, and after the parade and the ceremony at the Veterans Tribute. Also like to thank Rick Tholman, who is the one who really coordinates the parade and gets us all in order and gets us going, going up there. So the positives were many. Having the Rochester band this year, not only at our Memorial Day Ceremony that morning, but marching in the parade truly made a difference. We had Channel 7 News showed up at the tribute and had a nice five-minute presentation where they talked to a young family and a veteran in his 90s, and that was, that was great. It was well-attended. I think the attendance along the parade route and at the service at the Veterans Tribute was equal to, if not greater than, last year. Just, you could, there were more veterans this year, there are more veterans with their families, and you could tell that this really meant a lot to them. The weather was spectacular, a little less humid than last year. Having the cars with the signs on them sort of gave, you know, kept us together and made the parade look a little more official, much like the holiday parade. So those were some of the positives. Vito Pamplona, Vito Anthony Holmes, again, was the general and was the sponsor. We had, this year, we had 14 sponsors at the different levels, so we equaled how much we raised for the parade as last year. We also, the parade cost us, we raised altogether $9,750, which included what came from the cities, and the. cities, and the parade cost $8,700, so we're $1,000 to the good. Some of the issues we had was, the speeches were all great until the last speech. We had many, many residents complain about the tenor of the speech from the last presenter, and we've made a point that he will not be included in any future activities because it did not honor the memory of the veterans who gave their lives for their country and was more of a personal rhetoric and his own agenda. We also missed the Rochester Fire Department. They weren't there this year. I did talk to the chief afterwards and he's assured me they'll be there next year, and that was one of the things that came up from the group that met together. And we felt that we're probably going to simplify the parade next year. We're looking for changing the venue, maybe going back in time and doing something only involving Rochester and Rochester Hills and not including the Veterans Tribute. This would allow us to have our ceremony in the morning, have a parade either leaving from the cemetery or Rochester High School, ending at Rochester Hills, and then we would all be done probably by noon instead of, you know, having three different events. Again, these were just preliminary discussions at the Sister City Committee. It was a very robust committee, one of our best Sister City Committee meetings because all six of us had great ideas and discussion. So more to come on that, but bottom line, the parade was a success with the one exception. We have money stowed away for next year and we're looking to simplify the parade to still honor their heroes in the way that they deserve, but keeping it in a more structured and simplified manner.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, for that update. As far as Memorial Day, I mean, yes, it was very awesome. Love to have it come back to Rochester and like we had in the past. And also, if we can work on, because a lot of people showed up after it was over because of the time change. So many local residents who have been here a long time knew it always started at nine o'clock and not earlier, so if we can kind of keep some consistency and let the residents know so they can attend, that would be great.
Good feedback. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mayor, do you want me to do my tree committee now, or is that, I don't know where it got added into the agenda?
I think, I think now's the perfect time.
The tree committee met on June 15th, and we had a homeowner who had removed a large sugar maple, which is not a.
Silver maple.
Silver maple. And we met and had, came up with a resolution where, that the committee unanimously approved where he will need to plant a certain amount of foliage to make up for removing that tree without the permit and to pay the permit. Nick gave us an update on the tree fund. The tree fund is based on fines and, or permits, excuse me, or people who have illegally removed trees. We have $40,000 in the tree fund, but $30,000 of that has to wait the year because the resident has a year to plant foliage to make up for that amount. So the actual amount we have in there is a little over $10,000. As Councilmember Trent talked about, we scheduled the Sugar Maple Shelter and ribbon cutting for August 3rd at 6:30 PM. Thank you to Jason and his team for the two new pergolas, the two picnic tables and some of the benches, and they were done at a cost, a fraction of the cost if we had had somebody else do that. So thank you for what you've done. We got, we received good press from the Arbor Day Holy Family event. We are going for three years in a row of hitting our Rochester 100 tree planting, so we are going to be planting four trees on Romeo Street, right out here at the City Hall picnic area. We're looking at creating a picnic area and adding five trees there, and another couple trees to the Creekside Lift Station, five, four to five trees outside the post office along that ribbon between the sidewalk and the library. We've already planted 16 trees on the areas throughout the city. We planted the one tree at Holy Family. Roxy has agreed to plant nine trees, and we had three homeowner supply for the tree bait program. So it's going to be tight, but we will, we're going to go for three years in a row of hitting 100 trees. These are plans that'll go into the fall, then we'll keep you updated. Lastly, but not least, we were talking about the tree mural discussion, adding a tree-themed mural to the Kiwanis Pavilion in the park. We felt that the better committee to handle this would be the City Beautiful Committee, so we've invited Rachel Williams, the President of that committee, to our next City Beautiful meeting, and we'll work with them to, and we'll possibly use some tree fund money to help fund it, but they're better at the artists and all that kind of stuff, so we'll let them be the quarterback of that endeavor. That's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. For city administration, then, how, on the trees, how are they going to, when somebody is fined, like on this one that the tree committee did, how can they put that much, that many trees or that, what is the rule?
It was based on value, so we calculated value and it ended up being, what the reduction was, he came in and made a very passionate speech, and we accepted that, understood that, but said, but the ramifications, you took it down without a permit. So instead of 150% of the value, we went to the 100%. And he's going to plant, he can plant arborvitae's and then deciduous in his backyard, or write us a check. So he's got until the fall, we gave him till September 30th, I think they had all planted.
We gave, no, we gave him a year, which is, however, he's planned to plant them in the fall, this fall.
That's right.
Okay, so if I may, Mayor, so I guess back in the day when the other person came before us and they had those pines that were, the trees that were going to fall on their property, and we said that they couldn't put, they could only do so many arborvitae, have we changed that? Because that was what they were told, they weren't allowed to do that.
It was, it's dependent on each case. So you're allowed, if it's a pure replacement because you're taking them down with a permit, only 25% of those can be arborvitae's. This wasn't that case, so it was just a negotiated between them that there's, yeah, so he's using more, we don't know what he's going to do for sure. He's got a year to come up with a landscape plan, but that rule did not apply directly because it wasn't the same rule set, if you will. It's, when you're replacing for a reason, that you took down deciduous trees, then only 25% could go, or this was one tree. So it was more based on value than it was how many trees that he took down.
It was a nuisance tree, not a.
Well, and in both cases that you're referring to, it was an approved landscaping plan. And to me, that's the important language, that the Stony Point neighbor had to submit an approved landscaping plan. This other neighbor had to submit an approved landscaping plan and plant to it. So it has to be approved through city administration.
And no, and I recall that except the fact that they, they were being penalized though because they wanted to take down those trees that were definitely falling in a hazard.
Right, so you're right. It was, in this case, so don't, little minor difference, but if you ask legally to take down more than your three, then the maximum you can plant back in deciduous is 25%. In this case, it was one tree, so we put a value to it, and then we came to the value, and he's got a similar landscape plan for us to approve. So you can't put four-foot trees up or bushes, it's got to be things that are qualified, either two-and-a-half-inch diameter trees or six-foot evergreens.
But we actually made, we actually made it to where they could not put up all arborvitae's on their property.
We did, because, again, because it was a different situation where they requested that.
It's okay, I just, I would like us to stay consistent, though, because I don't think it's fair from one to the other, because anyone can put up arborvitae's when they, there's some other places in town that did that when they got in violation, and they are so crammed together now and they're starting to die off, and we're not, I mean, we don't police that either, right? So.
Okay, thank you. Report from the DDA, Councilmember Trent.
Yes. On the meeting on June 21st, last Wednesday, there was a Town Square project update. There was a report from Double Hall Solutions that was completed based upon two community focus groups gathering input from the community on the upcoming project. The DDA will update the council on that report at an upcoming council meeting. They did not update it that evening. For the grant update, they'll be applying for two grants, or they are applying for two grants, one of them, they needed our support or sign off, and they're on track for that. One of them is Revitalization 2.0 with an MEDC, and the other one is through Oakland County. We saw a presentation on the Main Street Boston Conference from Christie Trvaro, Taylor Clayton, and Jenna Odell, and they brought back a lot of good ideas and they were put forth, and they, and it was always good to learn and share what other Main Streets are doing around the nation. They have hired a new market manager for the farmer's market, I know they're happy about that. And last but not least, the Bill La Puma Community Spirit Award is open for applications on the DDA website, and I do not know that URL as I'm sitting here. So it's the Downtown Development Authority of Rochester, just Google it, and it's due July 5th, and it's for anyone that goes above and beyond, and it stands out, that you think that stands out in this community. And that's it.
Very good. Next is a report from the RAR, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Echoing Mayor Protem's report on the OPC, we are now exceeding pre-pandemic numbers. At our meeting, we went over, we have, through the end of May, we had 4,936 participants go through RAR. Last year, there were 4,428 at that time, so 508 over last year, so over a 10% increase over last year. Going back to the pandemic, same time, same five-month period, January through May, we were 4,132, so 804 over. So why is that happening? Because we are also offering more activities, or excuse me, courses. We had to add summer camps because of the demand, which is great, but we have 103 new courses this year over last year and 90 additional over the pre-pandemic. So again, things are looking very positive. The other thing we talked about is we, next month's meeting will be pretty robust as we get into the budget and other things, discussions, but we have updated the website and that'll go live on July 10th. We're also looking at a new recreation software upgrade to replace our current provider who has merged with another software company. That was about it. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd just like to add, next month is the RAR signature event, the Rochester tennis tournament, right outside here.
Are you going to be playing this year? Last year, you took your off.
And I expect to see our DPW director is going to play as well, so.
So who's going to win?
Well, there are age groups. Well, who knows, right?
Well, the DPW director did come in second at the SEMCOG putting competition last week.
Wow, nice.
Chris Barnett swept it with a hole-in-one at the last minute. Otherwise, Alec would have taken it.
Luck, luck.
We'll have to keep an eye on that DPW. Next is a report from the Historical Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 13 years ago, we revised the Historical Commission's budget with the intent that we would allocate $5,000 a year to support Greater Rochester Heritage Days. We've kind of outgrown that. We have more expenses than we can, we can cover there. So both the RHC and Dinosaur Hill will come back to us with some more itemized expense detail. So the request is going to be, hey, we probably need $2,500 more dollars to support the festival each year. So just be prepared for that, but there will be detail with the request.
Inflationary costs.
Yes.
Forty percent today, right? Next is a report from the Brownfield Development. I think we've talked about that in detail.
I do have a.
Mayor Protem's help you?
Yeah, I do have a question for city administration. Could you clarify the additional items that were in our packet regarding the Brownfield that we did not talk about tonight?
Yep, so there's a, two things, Marcy, correct me if I forget them here. One is going to be a reimbursement agreement with the elevator site. So we got our $1 million grant, but the grant initially was applied for by the rewalds. So in that, to get that grant, they had to submit the plan to the EDC and the folks at the granting source, Eagle, for what would be the economic plus to that. So they submitted the plans when they were going to build the world headquarters for One Stream. And that plan, it showed removing the elevator because they were going to donate it to the city to either move to Municipal Park or over to the farmer's market lot. Back then, that was three years ago, I believe. So since that time, obviously, One Stream backed out, rewald backed out, well, Sherry got the option on the property with rewalds. The new plans went to the granting source to say, this is what we think we're going to build, but we haven't gone to planning commission yet. We're saving the elevator, a portion of the elevator, repurposing it, and that still met with the ilk of the DEQ to continue, allow us to have the million-dollar grant. So in your packet, people probably could have freaked out going, where did the building go? Well, Sherry, that's not their submit, that was the original submission. It would still save the elevator, but just move it. So that was number one. And that reimbursement agreement at the Brownfield Authority meeting, two more questions came up tonight, that they want to make sure it's done completely without coming here and asking you for with conditions. So that will come at your July 10th meeting. And the second one was for.
Closeout rewald.
Oh, yeah, the closeout, yeah, the official closeout of the rewald, the, not abandonment, what do we call it? Abolishment of the actual Brownfield plan because it was done early. So that's an official action we have to take to close that loop. We've already made all the payments out, rewald's aware of it, and it's a technical thing that we'll bring to your July 10th meeting. Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
Hey, I need to make a correction about the Double Hall Solutions report for the focus groups. It was in the packet, but it wasn't presented, and it will be presented at a city council meeting. Yeah, so I just want to make that correction.
Okay, thank you. Next we have, are there any public comments? Come on up.
David Burlitich, 310 Elm Street. In regards to the pets in the cemetery, I know a guy, I'm not going to mention his name, but he used to walk his dog in the cemetery before he was aware that you weren't supposed to walk your dog in the cemetery. And then he was talking to Nick one day, and Nick said, hey, we're trying to get it approved so that you can walk your dogs in the cemetery. And since this person considers himself a law-abiding citizen, he's stopped walking his dog in the cemetery. But I did have to go look for that sign, which I had never, this guy had to go look for that sign, which he had never noticed before, which I think is a small sign on the front entrance. So if we're going to change that, or we have changed that, it probably would be helpful to have some more signage. It also says, please don't, something like that.
No pets, please.
No pets allowed, or something like that, and maybe some bigger signage. So people who aren't very observant, like this guy, may notice it, so thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Identify yourself for the.
Peter Bilidou, I live over at 403 Wesley. I'm here tonight because of concerns with the renovation on Wesley Street. There's a flooding issue at the corner of Fourth and Wesley that I've been dealing with pretty much my entire life. I've lived there my whole life, but it's a family house. I've talked to DPW before. It's the way the drainage is set up, you know, we talked about kind of where, how the drains flow, and Wesley is going to be under complete reconstruction for the next couple of months. I was trying to talk to the city about, can they run up Fourth Street like 120 feet to where the alley is? That drain there is undersized and it creates a flooding issue for my family to leave, get into the house. I have little kids, and I got pictures I can show you. Jason's well aware of the flooding issue. Nick lives right in the neighborhood, he's seen the flooding that's there. So I talked to Alec today, I know they're getting a quote from the contractor to go up farther up the street. I'd like the council to be, you know, to, you know, take consideration for that, and then if I could be a part of it in any way, I'd like to do that.
Sure.
Very good, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
And welcome to Mr. Bilidou, former city councilperson. Mr. Bilidou was way before my time.
I didn't see you back there.
Mr. Bilidou was also at the. Mr. Bilidou was also at the OPC soiree, supporting the OPC as well. Any further comments? Brian, anything?
There is nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. On to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just have one thing, Alec and I, today spent a couple and a half hours at Rochester Hills with the semi-annual, that means every two years, right? So every two years, the Road Commission brings in their top guns, and they come in and they say, here's what we talked about two years ago. They use their benchmarking to say, did we accomplish this in your communities? So Rochester Hills and Rochester, it's Mayor Barnett, myself, Alec, and mayor's staff, engineers, and then they talk about what they're doing around all of Oakland County, updated us on the Yates, the roundabouts, all that good stuff. So, and then go over how they're handling EVs, the myriad of things. I think the biggest takeaway for me at that meeting was, the director was very adamant about making sure that we are cognizant that the Road Commission has been an independent organization for 110 years.
Yeah.
There's some at the commission that want to absorb them into the county, the general county, just to be an actual division of the county, so they have more control over what they do. And he's obviously adamantly against that, as do all of the staff. They are rated as the top road commission anywhere in the United States, their model, they're a model. And anything to change that, to have politics get involved, obviously, they're vehemently against. And so he updated on that, on us with that. And then, not a lot of projects, other than finishing Dequender, and everything's on schedule, and it was a good meeting, but it took a while. The engineers for Rochester Hills like kind of droned things out. So they have a lot more projects there. We talked about gravel roads, why aren't gravel roads paved, how much does it cost per mile, why does Orient Road have been done three times in the last 11 years, and Parkdale's only been done once, things like that. So it was, it was a good meeting, back and forth, and I think we got our point across, what we would like to see, and they let us know that they're here for us, and anything they can do to help. They ask every year, what, three times in that meeting, are you sure you don't want Parkdale? We'll give it to you. But we don't want Parkdale because of that bridge. It would cost so much money, so we'll let them keep that. But other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Just a reminder that between the adjournment of this meeting and you guys going in closed session, we're going to have a quick election commission meeting.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Just another SEMCOG update. DPW director and I did attend last week, talked a lot about road safety, and really a plan to have much safer roads. Obviously, some legislation that's very timely is the June 30th, no cell phones while you're driving, that there's going to be a lot of awareness, and really heads up to residents, I think there's going to be a lot of tickets issued 4th of July weekend around that. So don't touch your cellphone while you're driving.
Councilmember Sage?
One item, sir, tonight. So over the past few days, we've received a lot of correspondence regarding stray cat issues here in town. And there was one email that I, I guess I wanted to speak to, because I need clarification, or I want, I want the citizens here to understand. So in, in one of these emails, a citizen mentioned that he has trapped cats in the past. Is that allowed? Do you need a permit? You can just do that, okay?
I think you can trap them, you can't kill them.
Okay. So his second request was to assist the city walking around with a gun and shooting cats. I'm assuming that's not permitted, correct?
So, if I may, so we know Mr. Zappalo wrote the letter, it's public knowledge. So he's frustrated, I think he made a comment about a pellet gun, you can't discharge firearms in the city, you can't shoot animals. We don't trap the cats, there's, there's a lot of, I'm shocked there wasn't 30 people here tonight, because they all said they were coming, but they didn't. So I'm thankful they did not, because I think we responded. Today, the person that's feeding the cats was issued a citation, we gave them a warning, asked them not to feed anymore, there was evidence of ground feeding cats. So we talked about it, and we issued the citation. So I think that let them know that we're not playing favorites. The person's made their own decision, they can tell the judge, or the magistrate, why they feel obligated to feed the cats. Now, we don't, we do not trap cats or any animals, we give the requested traps to the resident. When they get an animal, they call RJ, RJ picks them up and just, and takes them someplace, but he doesn't kill them, or they're not euthanized at all. So they're pushing it back on us like, it's our obligation to trap them. They're not the person who is feeding, they're not her cats, they're now community cats. So obviously, they're being drawn there. There's other people in my neighborhood that are feeding them, that are drawn to my property, but it's my responsibility to relocate them. We've offered already to the people that have been complaining, we'll give you the traps. We have a bunch of them right downstairs. So if they will take us up on that, we will relocate them. There was a suggestion that they should be neutered and brought back, that's not the problem. The problem is the feces, and they've eaten all the songbirds in my neighborhood. So they need to be relocated someplace more appropriately, but that's, that's our take on it. But you cannot shoot them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. The last meeting, I asked the city why we were still providing the hybrid public meetings. I sent an email, which wasn't responded to, so I want to bring it up again tonight and ask administration, you know, we've been doing these hybrid meetings, the pandemic is over, we, I'd like to do, find out over the last six months, how many people have connected through the Zoom meetings? We play, we pay a person to sit there and monitor it over time of all these meetings. We are one of the only few cities that continues to have a hybrid public meeting procedure. We're behind the times. People, we saw last meeting and this meeting, when people are revved up about something, they show up in public, as we had people come up and make public comment today, and with the skate park last week. If they cannot attend, we have avenues for people to view the meetings live on our website. So I'd like city administration to report back to council, so we can consider why, why, why we need to continue doing this, and should we continue doing this. I think it's a waste of money and a waste of effort, and we should get back with, get in with the times and go back to in-person city council meetings. That's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Trent.
Okay, it might be the last time, or maybe not, the last time I talk about the lovely new Never Forget Garden of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in the cemetery, but I do want to thank Mayor Protem Salvia and Mayor Bixson for joining in that ceremony, and also the Stony Creek Daughters of the American Revolution for the wonderful cookie treats they had, and the protocol, and the presentation that they did, and for the many that came. And last but not least, Colin Peddic of the DPW, and Carl Mayer as well, who came up with a wonderful creative solution of how to mount the plaque, and it's very lovely, they got it mounted on that rock. And I think I heard that Colin spent two hours, you know, grinding or doing something to make it work. So I really, I'm, I'm really happy that it worked out so well. I had, I was beyond my expectations.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, Colin's so humble, Carl actually did it. Colin gave, he called me, said Carl did it. It was, they came up together, but Carl did all that work.
Oh, well, thank you, Carl, sorry. Thanks for making that clear. Thank you, Carl.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. So I want to, it's, this never hit the newspaper, and I don't know why. I think Rochester Community Schools needs to start recognizing their students, but you've all heard of the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Well, one of our own, very own Rochester Hills seventh graders came in number fifth, came in number five, and first time ever to the finals as well. And it was an amazing, amazing watching the spelling bee with these kids, it was great. But his name is Aran Kadhar, and he was number 103 out of, out of hundreds of these students. But his word that he missed, though, after all the words, was ferretone. And it was, yeah, it was crazy. I was like, gosh, these kids are all way smarter than most adults I know. But it was very intense, it was beautiful to see that. And he'll be back for another round at the National Spelling Bee, but I wanted to recognize him. And I didn't know, are we able to, you know, reach out to these students and have them come and be recognized?
Mayor, we, Stony Creek's women's soccer won the very first, so we would, if you concur, we would like to reach out to them and bring them to the meeting.
Right. We also had the Rochester cheer team win again, too, states. It's one of those things that these cool things aren't hitting the newspaper, and I thought it was something...
The cheer team won, too.
Yeah, cheer team, yeah.
And the Stony Creek soccer team, one of the, one of the members was like the Miss Soccer for the state of Michigan.
Well, we can do it all at once, okay?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get invite out.
So that was it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple quick ones. One, it's nice to see the staff here tonight, so thank you for coming. And also just, I would like to thank everybody for their help Memorial Day, for our ceremony down in our cemetery, and the parade and the march up to, to the Point, whatever they call it.
Veterans' Point.
Veterans' Tribute.
Veterans' Tribute.
VTO, or something. So that was great. Again, thank you to the committee, Mark, for all the work you did. And I would just like to say that all, all of us from our city, we all focused on honoring our veterans, and that's all we were focused on. So we're proud of our city for doing that. And we're all, I believe, we all were trying to do the right thing. So on that note, so do we...
Yeah, end this meeting, and then we'll do elections.
So we make a, so we're going to make a motion to go into closed session with the idea of returning to public session. Do we have a motion for that?
So, yes.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support, supported by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned, and we will take a five-minute break.
Cats, dogs, and birds.
Two. Okay, so we're back in public session. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for the, to approve the contract negotiations for the officer group that were presented, with one change in language, where we will pay the contribution to the health savings account and the one-time amount for any employees through the July 9th pay period.
Support.
So motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson.
And longevity, and longevity.
That was the second part I was referring to.
Madam Clerk, are you good with that motion?
I'll get with Joellen and get the rest of the language.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Albrecht.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as presented for the ASME Union Group, which is made up of the DPW Union Staff, as presented by Joellen.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion, Madam Clerk, the roll.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Good negotiations.